Good morning, this is the Public hearing number 38, January 18th, Jeff Carroll. Commissioner Glenn.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Chad. Commissioner Devin Shatter.
Here.
Commissioner Dolph. Commissioner Gersoff.
Here.
Commissioner Olbert Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Lovey. Commissioner Schmier.
Here.
Good morning, commissioners, we're going to start today's preservation department's agenda with two public meetings versus item number one, this is LBC 19-27029, an application for a certificate of appropriate business number of Plymouth, block 20, Oplone, this is 2937 J Street, AKA 1618 Plymouth Street in the Dumbo Historic District, warehouse built in 1975, 1977, the application is demolish the existing building and construct a new building, this is presented at the public hearing September 25th, 2018, and no action was taken at that time.
Good morning, commissioners, James Presley, Preservation Staff, 2937 J Street is located at the northeast corner of J and Plymouth Street in Dumbo Historic District, proposal was presented on September 25th, with the demolition of 33 J Street, 1970s brick warehouse, and its replacement with a one-story new building. The proposed building featured faceted GFRC panels with large aluminum single pane windows, and includes a one-story setback 30-foot tall rooftop mechanical bulkhead and facade that was just to be constructed. At the time, the commissioners were supportive of the proposed street wall height and overall massing, but asked the applicants to re-study several aspects of design, including the solid-to-void ratio and the fenestration pattern of the size. The applicants are back with revised proposal that lightens and thickens the GFRC paneling, decreases the size of the window openings throughout, decreases the size of the windows throughout, including the non-faceted secondary basins. Renderings have been updated to more accurately demonstrate that the proposed fenestration pattern matches. And I just want Jonathan Marble of the Warped Architects is here to observe.
Can you hand out the motion to open the proceedings? On paper.
Good morning, commissioners, Jonathan Marble, Marble Architects, on behalf of the team, I'll present some of the changes that we made, thanks to your comments, it's about a building. In the context, I'll just point out on the bar by 42, 44 J, it's a pad from our building, that these wanted me to say, this is the longest width or may of the buildings in the district that we have picked up, and I just want to mention that because it's the proportions of the window to the solid wall they were addressing in this revised version, and you can see the robust concrete wall, this is one of the signature details of the Dumbo district, and in our redrawing of the building, we went from the thinner work, window wall, to a thicker GFRC panel, in every way imaginable, in its height and its width, and we also, to redress the windows, should we push the glazing furthest back in its frame as possible, and I'll bring those details up, it's the last, second to last page of a package, so this is a before and after sequence of images that we're going to now be seeing, and we have 10 revised contextual renderings, all before and after, that will highlight some of the improvements to the building, and therefore its presence as a Dumbo building, think it's more surface area of concrete, and in the oblique views, you really see that it's not just the, it's the little, the little returns on the concrete panel itself are really an added bonus, that didn't change in dimension, but it now becomes more of a player in this conundrated facade, and by distance, of course, you'll get much more reflectivity from that concrete surface, and therefore a more pronounced, kind of chunkier, blockier building will emerge from that. And abuse of the park, which would, if you don't have the unidulated concrete panel, it's a flattened panel, same proportions of windows, that, because of the geometry of the footprint, the windows are tighter and not as long. And then I think, and these are big views, which are such a signature thing of a, really will allow the building to emerge as a, in its presence, with longer the air buildings. This little tiny view of that moment will get emerged, and that kind of supporting the warehouse, the workforce kind of architecture, less slender, more robust, and these final 10 pages of diagrams are replaying to the jump, you can see the dimensions change very substantially in all of the sides, and then this is a really important detailed page, because you can see how, well, the panels depth in the plan on the right, the depth doesn't change, but the widths of the panels change, and that's what's, and the height changes in the section, and that's what's really created this really, I think, fantastic side, and appreciate your comments from before, and this is our final page, just shows dimensional changes from 30 inches in the horizontal to 48 inches, and the vertical goes from 48 to 66, the windows, the window base don't change, but because of that glazing detail, and the glass gets pushed back as further back into the frame into the building as possible to get that shadow line to be more pronounced, and we beeped up the Malianses building. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Before we start, we did receive a letter from someone in our community who's still expressing concerns about the design and the view as well.
I think this is astounding, really pleased to see the other stuff go away. You know, I expressed some really profound concern, tried to hold back actually my concern a little bit, and what I'm really pleased about here is how this building really does fit in, it is a Dumbo building, it was one of the image that made my point, to me at least, that the building I said might have been a Bryant Park building before, now it's definitely not a Bryant Park building, this is a Dumbo building, with a lot of very interesting creative design work by Jonathan, I think to create a building that stands out, even as it really does fit in that, which is I think, my whole point of a new building in Historic District, so I am in full support and really happy that the overall idea of this building didn't have to appreciably change to make it fit in, because I think there was always producing things happening in the building, and I was a little worried that my personal comments, maybe others, would have deflected you off in some of the direction that I didn't have.
Does anyone else like to comment?
I agree, I think that there were a lot of interesting creative references to the Historic District, with these minor changes in just sort of tweaking of proportions, setting the last ad, making up the mortgage, make it to schooling, and fully realize its original intent to fit within the district, and also maintain your design philosophy in intent, so I'm happy to write books to you both, hope you feel the same way.
All right, because now we have a motion.
In the matter of 2937 J Street, the Dumbo Historic District, this is an application to demolish the existing building and construct a new building. I note that the existing warehouse building, 29 J Street, on the site of Noll, is not one of the buildings that contributes to the special architectural or historic character of the Dumbo Historic District, and that the present two-story warehouse is constructed in 1970, on the site of a six-story late 1970s warehouse. I heard about that the Dumbo Historic District is a contemporary life of American art, buildings made from 1880 to 1930, along with buildings ranging from principal county houses to American round bar style buildings, reinforced concrete and steel structures resulting in eclectic streetscape, buildings of very tight, and that the streetscape range of five to 11 stories and industrial and garage buildings, with 46% of the buildings, of building heights between 190 and 150 feet in height. I recommend approval, believing that the existing building is not one of the buildings for which the Dumbo Historic District was designated, therefore its demolition will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the district, that the height enhancing of the proposed building is consistent with the height enhancing of the historic buildings in the streetscape, which range from five to 12 stories. That given the scale of the building, and the narrowness of the surrounding streets, the large rooftop mechanical bulkhead, which is primarily visible from the bridge, the water pump, will have a minimal presence on the roof gate, that the plane of the front facade of the building will go on with neighboring properties thereby reinforcing the street wall, and helping the building to remain well scaled and harmonious with its context, that the cast basinery of the facade plating is consistent with reinforced concrete and steel structures found throughout the district in terms of materiality, color, and finish, that the cross bracing structural system behind the facade, which is visible through the windows, represents a narrative of structural evolution in this district, and references the exposed bracing at Manhattan Bridge. That the faceted GFRC panels will add depth to texture to the facade, that the solid-to-void ratio of the facade is in keeping with the character of the other buildings in the Historic District. And the detailing and finish of the aluminum windows provide depth and articulation to the fenestration, keeping with the character of other buildings in the Historic District. The rooftop character planter and railing details is carefully conceived and well-integrated with steel wall building design, that the closed storefronts within each structural bay, consisting of glazed brick bulkheads, profiles, multi-light pring with central bubble entrance doors, solid transom bars featuring centrally placed steel-framed canopies with glass roof, solid transom bars with mechanical loopers concealed by the transom, all finished forested, finished forested green, with a quality proportion and integration with other infilling storefronts in the Historic District, and that the canopies are well-integrated with the design of the facade. That the proposed non-illuminated signage, that is to be extensively externally mounted to the multi-light transoms at three bays, will be limited to a maximum height of 18 inches, is well scaled to the building to establish the template for future tenant signage. And that the proposed main office entrance canopy spanning the J Street central bay will simply be simply designed, well scaled to the bay, incompatible with the industrial character of the building in terms of its materials, details, and finish. That the resetting of the rail tracks of historic cobblestones will retain these significant features, that the material of those granite papers and curbing match those of the historic bays and curves, while complying with ADA accessibility requirements on a smooth surface, and will manage previously approved EOG standards in the district, that although portions of the rail tracks will be omitted for pedestrian payment, the proposed papers are typical, are typical in size for the district, and will relay and variety of infurations, and that the variety of paving infurations will preserve a sense of irregular paving historically down in the district.
Okay, second public meeting, item LBC 19-27029, an application for a certificate of appropriate business number of Plymouth, block 45, Lot 7502, 60 Green Street, Soho Castle Historic District, Renaissance Road, Warehouse Design by David Furbach, J 71, the application is to install brackets on, is presented at the public hearing September 18th, 2018, no action was taken at that time.
Good morning, commissioners, James Presley, Preservation Staff, 60 Green Street is on the east side of Green Street between Soho Castle Iron Historic District. The application is to install functional two face brackets at the bracket sign near the store front entrance. A proposal was presented to this commission on September 18th for the installation of the bracket sign for the store near the store front entrance, the building is open to use by Cleveland Wood, already has one of the bracket signs for the 10 floor, but they did not get to install it. The reason for this proposal was brought to a hearing at the time, proposal was brought to a hearing at the time, because the proposal exceeds the rule requirements of Section 220B, that one bracket sign for each ground floor is several, first group bracket sign, proposed bracket sign. At the time, there was also discussion about signage advertising limits of a store and not the store itself. The commissioner's president indicated that the second bracket sign would set an unnecessary precedent, and asked that the applicant eliminate the one sign and re-study the proposal for a working clock instead of the depiction of the clock. The applicants are back to revise proposal that eliminates the previously approved standard bracket sign, proposes a non-illuminated functional clock that faces on both sides that do not, that does not meet bracket sign rules, because the overall weight movement from face to face will exceed two, two, will be too thick. Also note that the watch name is incorporated into the con, however, this is a function of it being made by Rolex, not advertising. Carolyn Paulson is here to answer any further questions.
I'm not sure we could be able to tell, I think at the hearing, there were, it was the existing sign, and the second sign that proposed, and the commission felt that three signs were too many, suggested a clock and move from that, and so they have called a clock instead of a sign, and actively eliminated the existing sign, so it's really one sign now, it's really shaped like a novelty sign, a clock slash sign, and seems like it's completely keeping with the store types and all of these signs in the historic district.
Thank you for that. In the matter of, obviously, 1927029, 60 Green Street, Soho Castle Historic District, Renaissance Road, Warehouse designed by Henry Blumberg, in 1871, the application is to install bracket signs. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are aligned in nature by the history to the special architectural and historic characters on Soho Castle Iron Historic District, I recommend approval upon that. That historically, bracket signs have been installed as signage to advertise the name of the retail establishment, or, in the case of non-illuminated signs, to advertise the type of trade or businesses contained within, that the proposed sign would uphold the trade name approach. That the size, thickness, design placement, and details of the proposed block sign will harmonize with the facade, that the previously contracted sign, if it is removed, and this clock, will be sole projecting sign for the store, and therefore, along with the sign, now the name of the sign then, if you remove it now, the store front will not open on the building, and that electrification of the sign will allow the clock to be functional, and that the presence of the clock will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you for not getting into the talk this much.
Okay, commissioners, we're going to switch now to the public hearing agenda, item number one is proposal 19-2703, it's an application for a certificate of appropriate business number of Beams, block 1444, Lot 32, this is Beams 3-935, Bavin, in Jackson Heights Historic District, Neo-Romanian式style garden apartment building designed by Andrew J. Thomason, November 245, the application is to modify alterations at the fence and gate made without landmark's preservation permission permits, and to install night posts in places existing for other Jackson Heights. Good morning, commissioners, Community Shawn Preservation Staff, 8309 35 Bavin is located on the north side of 35 Bavin, between 83rd and 4 Streets, within the Jackson Heights Historic District, the application is to address landmark's preservation permission violations, and to install under perimeter fence and leave mannequins to the garden space. Just jump ahead to designation, the time of designation in 1995, the building had a pair of brick piers at the entrance, with decorative motifs at the top, located near entrance to the garden, there was a tall decorative fence between the piers in the building, and a tall decorative gate to secret a building. The piers can be seen in a 1925 photo, which looks like it was taken shortly after the building was built, although some of the decorative details and the fence are not shown there, potentially because they were removed yet, it's unclear, however, there's a plan that was published in 1926, surveying American apartments at the time, which shows what looks like a pier with gate and fence there. Piers also are seen at distance in the 1940s, tax photo, not really determined fence, and then in the 80s, tax photo, this block, I don't know. Photos from commissioners' files from 2001, 2004, show these piers here, they've been painted, they had this cap on the top of the, sort of decorative fish motif design, the top of the cap, the fence had decorative detail here, which was slightly different than the details found at the gate, you know, that difference, you can see the fish design here. In 2006, the previous building ownership demolished piers, removed the ironwork, and constructed the existing piers, which you see here, and received violations from the commission for that work. They attempted to legalize the work at the public hearing in 2007, and the proposal was denied, noting the loss of the original decorative ironwork and construction of the piers with a brick that didn't match the basinery, and additionally, a tall regular fence was installed at the perimeter building, the site, and then also received violation. The current applicant, there's new ownership here, they are now proposing to reconstruct the piers with new brick, which is the piers of the plan here, with new brick that will match the building, the basement of the building, the new cap of the piers, and a new fish motif that's shown here, just sort of a placeholder, there's sort of this work, I'm getting a little bit smaller hatchment, it's there. They're also showing restoring the fence here, the two piers of the building, although you can note that the design of the fence, they're actually picking up from the design of the previous gate, not the design of the fence, there was a slight difference, and they are proposing not to reinstall the gate, so they're asking to legalize the, essentially the removal of that gate between the piers. Additionally, they're proposing to replace the perimeter fence with a two-foot high fence, and it'd just be a simple black metal picket fence, you can see, so this is the plan, the new piers, the new ironwork, new gate, I mean, new perimeter fence, see there are a few other fences within the neighborhood, some of the low fences, this one I know, we did approve at the public hearing a few years ago, I'm actually not sure of the other ones. Just provided that this presentation is just updated. Additionally, the proposal includes, some context photos jumping out of it, proposal includes the installation of night posts, so there's some existing light fixtures in courtyard here, and proposal is to install five night posts within the garden space, there's existing proposal to be re-written in, to be re-written in, as shown on the busy land here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, there. The architect, Michael Nutaro, if you have any questions, any approach.
I think, if you're welcome to come up and speak your aim and add anything you'd like, and see if the commissioners have any questions. Thank you for very short.
Greetings, everyone, I'm Michael Nutaro, architect, and we just wanted to mention that the present ownership has been aggressively moving the building towards compliance, back in 2016, 2017, in parapids, and a lot of sign work was done to bring it into, again, a more harmonized state, they spent a fortune on the terracotta tile, and all of the significantly reinforced parapids, so we believe that that work, well, we supervise the work, so we're happy with it, and we are, again, trying to deal with right now the warning letters that were issued by the commission for the low fence and the piers, and also to make some lighting improvements inside the courtyard. As far as the design of the gates and design of the ironwork, we looked all throughout the neighborhood for inspiration, we looked at the, at other Andrew Thomas buildings, and we also looked carefully at the old designation photographs, we tried to pick some motif that was, I think, appropriate to the building, and we weren't sure if the gates were original or the fence were original, the diamond pattern that you see here on the lower detail of the fence is picked up, picks up actually a diamond pattern on the original lighting fixtures that we saw, and it also picks up some other, similar details in the neighborhood, like the St. John Bar directory, and so we thought to go back for the, for the line here, the dancing fish motif, it's approximately 24 inches high, we, I think that the, we plan to work closely with our preservation team to do on this, as we get into, if it is, we get into the molding process and so forth, but that's the intent, is to, is to restore basically what was there. The idea also is to maintain open field of the Jackson Heights Garden District, Garden Apartment District, while preserving some of the historical aspects of the Andrew Thomas design. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to address them, break the source of management So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to address them, break the source of management. The brick is supposed to match the original piers, which was, is it a brick from the building, or is it same?
The corseting is slightly different than the door.
But the color and finish?
The color and finish would be the same.
Just to note, sorry, the time of designation, the brick was painted white, prepared for painted white, so it's kind of unclear what, whether those piers matched the building design or not. I think our, our suggestion, or in our discussion, we talked about trying to get new brick that better matched the masonry of the building. Also to note, I'd like to mention, there are a few other violations on the building that are all being addressed at staff level, with a replacement, we're working on building one, new replacement permit, and also, some of the masonry work that was done 10 years ago, or more, was not ideal. And we've been trying to get the best solution we can, given the existing conditions. So although the, some of the joints were cut wider than they should have been, the current management did not do that work, they're trying to make the best we can, and we've been working closely to amend to that, and so it, just in, you know, if you're looking at it and thinking that some of the painting is very big and white, not so great, that is something we all understood, and we're trying to work towards that, towards a better solution. But yes, to your question about the greatness, sort of unclear what it was, it wasn't.
Yes, ma'am. And this, I'm sorry. This is a question about the fence, and also for the staff. You said that you were trying your best to come up with something that seemed contextual with the other fences, or also that was as possible to the original fence. We don't have an original design, right? There's nothing?
Not in the dump, no. But we have the plan view that shows the fence in plan view, with the open basket posts at the third points on both sides, and it also shows a gate in plan view. The, the photograph here, that was a thing from, from the commission, I believe, shows the diamond pattern inside the gate, and shows a scroll pattern at the locations between the building and the left end here. We presented the round, the fence restoration with the diamond motif, so that, just in version.
Just to be clear, we don't have drawings or any other clear documentation of the original fence, other than what was there at the time of designation, and there's this.
Is this shot here to be imagined?
We're, we're unclear, to be, to be quite honest, but in 2007, when this went to the commission, it was denied, it was noted that this was, all of this was original ironwork. I don't, there's nothing in our files to really indicate that as definitive, but just based on the design, it's possible that these are the original piers, it's possible the gate was a different design, one of them might have been replaced. Unfortunately, it's unclear, based on the documentation we have, which if either of these were from 1925, 1926. But we do, we do believe that there was ironwork here, it's just unclear, we can't 100% say that this is the original ironwork. We can assume, or we can...
But it is decorative ironwork that was there at the time of designation, and it seems that the, the style and ornament of the fence is in keeping with the building.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, because, you know, the fact that it was at the designation does not maintain that this, you know, the original design. Thank you.
Any questions? If you'd like to tell me the test, we'll come back. Jesse Denon?
Good morning. Jesse Denon, Historic District Council. HTC has pleaded with replication of the fish at the building's entry, and is sincere willing of some applicants to liberate past alterations to this building. Like living store features of this property, sculptures were long lost after being solidified by the commission, we care a little for the building. In the spirit of recreation, there is a surviving original light fixture from 1925, designed by Andrew Thomas, remaining on the building. If possible, replication of these handsome objects should be explored as a solution to better accommodate the courtyard. Both proposed garden lamps are reversible, you know, off to the building, the original light fixtures will be a welcome gesture. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? We have a letter from Community Board, saying that they have no objections to approving the work previously completed, and that new construction and installation will be done. They also note that we worked extensively with them, a second time, so they appreciated that. Are there any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Any thoughts?
They're resporing?
Yeah, I think it's a really restorative approach, and while the fence detail may be based on the gate, it seems to be in spirit with ironwork generally that was in place at the time of designation, and certainly in plan, is in place as the original drawings. And I think that the low fence around the perimeter is consistent with our practice in this historic district of having low fences at front airways of apartment buildings. And I think the lamp posts are discreet relations that, within the garden, spirit of the garden interior porch, I agree.
Okay. I agree, and also the, you know, high fence is also in a whole mist area, because it's signaling that it's, it's by the garden actions, it's, it's, otherwise, so, but there, the fact they're undertaking other restoration or improvement, all of them, all of them on, it's a good, it's a good, uh...
Thank you, ma'am.
Just want to add, you have to add more comments. It seems our building is in very good hands now, and it's a good, it was not before, so that's great, you know. But also, this is typical of many other examples of applications that we get, where the spirit of, as opposed to the absolute justification of an element, is required, because we don't really know exactly how we're able to detail, and so the creativity within bounds, the appropriate bounds, is called on by the architect to create something in the spirit of, as opposed to the repertory. I think it's just a good reminder that we are often, rather unstable, called on to look at these kinds of things, which are a little bit difficult.
I guess one other comment that it's, for those who aren't familiar with the district, it's, it's got, there's whimsical little details, like the fish and griffins and things that appear throughout the neighborhood, because in many cases, you've got a lot of five-story buildings that are, you know, just desert, sort of differentiated by brick work. And so every once in a while, you find these little interesting details, and cornice are the, you know, maybe over the doors around, or whatever, and it's kind of, it's kind of a nice little thing to look, look out for, these whimsical details.
That's great.
In matter document number 19-1780383-09, 35th Avenue, the Jackson Heights Historic District. The application is to modify alterations of the fence and gate made without LPC permits to install lamp posts and to replace an existing rubber fence. I recommend approval, noting that the piers will be reconstructed with new brick to match the facade masonry, and with new decorative elements that recall historic elements, and that their reconstruction will lead the garden closer to its historic appearance. That the removal of the entrance gate resulted in garden space with no physical barrier at the path, which is a feature in keeping with the entrances found at garden apartments and garden home complexes in this historic district. That the new lamp post will be installed within the garden space, will have no visual impact on the streetscape, and their simple design and presence will not detract from any significant architectural features of the building, or from the special architectural or historic character of the historic district. That the removal of the existing perimeter fence will eliminate an unsympathetic visual barrier between the property and the street. That the simple design in 24-inch height of the proposed perimeter fence will be in keeping with the previously approved fences at front yards of apartment buildings in this historic district, and that the design of the new tall fence between the piers in the building will recall the historic fence, and will be sympathetic to the historic character of the building and the streetscape.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Next up is item number two, proposal 19-15398, an application for certificate of appropriate disrepair of the number of Brooklyn, block 18, Babin, lot 10. Seven Verona Place in the Bedford Historic District. Neo-Rhodes style rowhouse designed by Thomas B. Jackson, number 1881. The application is to alter the areaway paving and under slot gates, and straw bridges.
Morning, commissioners. I'm William Ely, of the Corporation Department Staff. I will be presenting proposal for seven Verona Place. The owners, Billy A. Puckin and Tenee Preston, along with their architect, Darren Kompas, are here to take any follow-up questions you may have. So seven Verona Place is located on the east side of Verona Place, between 4th Street, out of the district, and Main Street. It is one of a row of 10, which are largely intact in terms of roof lines, except for number 19, Verona Place, which has a third story addition. There is a staff level component of exterior work, which the applicant, if you're asking, if you have questions. You were looking at alterations to the roof, areaway, and understood gate, because these are features that are characteristic of the buildings in the row, and are relatively packed. As you can see in this aerial view, the buildings in the row possess a uniform low-sloped roofline, and each has a single dormer. As you can see in this section, the building has a low ceiling attic space. Now, the dormer and the roofline, the roof surface are not visible from directly in front of the building, and rooflines and the roof surfaces themselves are not, my experience, visible from the street, but the dormers are visible from across the street. In looking at this, staff took into account the intactness of this characteristic of the building in the row, and the lack of precedent for alterations to the roof, thus this could not be approved at staff level. So the proposal, in part, is to remove a portion of the roof framing to create an open terrace with sliding doors, as you can see in the model view. Here's another model view, aerial, aerial view. The dormer will remain. This shows the plan view, the dimensions, a little more than 10 feet deep, a little bit more than seven feet from carriageway to the edge of the dormer. Illustrates some of the exterior restoration work. 19, again, is the one building in the row that was altered and has lost its cornice. The proposal at the areaway is to enlarge and reconfigure the steps leading to the understood gate that you can see in these photographs, as well as remove the astroturf and install the areaway paving. Looking at this, we see that the area's step configuration, but largely intact at each of the other houses in the row, and thus the proposed alteration is not yet something that can be approved at staff level. These close-up renderings show how the areaway steps will be enlarged and widened. And finally, in a late-breaking improvement to the proposal, which is not reflected in your summary, the wrought iron understood gate, which the designation report notes is probably original, will be removed.
Would you like to say anything? The presentation was very clear.
Yeah, I don't have anything additional to add, I'm free to answer questions.
Are there any questions?
Again, are those doors at the right side of the dormer, are they visible from any angle?
Just Steve, you can just go back.
Darren Kompas, I'm the architect for the project. The doors at the, at the roof level, will not be visible. They are, that's good to hear, right there. So kind of the roof surface is visible, and we're not altering the roof line, so we have this...
And for reference, commissioners, number seven is the one that has the original lines.
Right, so this is the current ridge line, just not going to be altered, but ridge line at the highest point of the building is not visible from any point from the hallway, so therefore, those doors will not be visible.
Yes. So I think they were originally proposing to replace it with a door, and that application has just been revised, and they're going to retain the historical gate.
No alteration.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
Close the hearing.
Jesse Denon?
Jesse Denon, Historic District Council. The proposed construction of the roof terrace is an unusual intervention. Nancy S. Aston, opposed, LPC supervision and clarification of proper water protection strategy during this process. Upon examination of the minimum house of the row, I believe this has been addressed, but I don't think it has. If you feel accountable, the past time and ownership days of these property are identical, and therefore, likely are some of the features, this decorative intended feature should not be discarded, and there is a situation to install a door that's located in the escape. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? We have a letter from the Westland, from the Community Board, Free Landmarks and Confederation Committee. It's a letter in support of finding that the renewal of the sole creative use that is inconsistent with the character and attributes of this historic property, and modification of the MVA, where it will create a brand-new storefronts under the... Is there anything you'd like to say in response to any comments?
I just want to clarify on the point, I just want to say that the, the, the height of the parapet that's going to basically service the front guardrail is already about four feet high. There will not be any need for any additional ironworker guardrails, so it's really just kind of tucked in under, under that front surface, so there's not going to be any new, this is purely subtraction, it's not addition.
Great. Yes, ma'am. For plantings, goes to be added to the, to those areas?
I don't think we're going to be doing any extensive green roof plantings or anything like that.
I think that would stick up.
I mean, that's proposed. Planting down below, but no, no large trees, I don't think. It's a fairly small area.
It could be an umbrella.
True.
Okay. Any other questions? Any more motion to close the hearing?
Close the hearing.
Any thoughts? Yes, ma'am.
It's a nice space.
It's a nice space, and it's not visible from a public way, and I think the area would change as modest, just enlarge those steps slightly to make it easier access, easier access.
Not our, not our problem, but if water, you're right, you're in the area to help.
Yes.
With the argument.
Okay, great. Someone's like, uh...
In matter, LPC 1915398, seven Verona Place, Bedford Historic District. Neo-Rhodes style rowhouse designed by Thomas B. Jackson, who built in 1881. The application is to alter the areaway paving and understood gate to construct a roof terrace. I know the building's style scales terribly detailed, however, among the few reasons because he is a special architectural historic character of the Bedford Historic District, and I recommend approval, finding just proposed operations to accommodate the new terrace. At the front, this lowest roof will not be visible from any public view, and will be a minimal intervention that will maintain the expression of the original volume of the building. But the terrace will be set within the existing roof pitch, and will not encompass the entire width of the roof.
Nineteen, again, is the one building in the row that was altered and has lost its cornice. The proposal at the areaway is to enlarge and reconfigure the steps leading to the understood gate that you can see in these photographs, as well as remove the astroturf and install the areaway paving. Looking at this, we see that the area's step configuration is largely intact at each of the other houses in the row, and thus, the proposed alteration is not yet something that can be approved at staff level. These close-up renderings show how the areaway steps will be enlarged and widened. And finally, in a late-breaking improvement to the proposal, which is not reflected in your summary, the wrought iron understood gate, which the designation report notes as probably original, will remain.
Would you like to say anything? The presentation was very clear.
Yeah, I don't have anything additional to add. I'm free to answer questions.
Are there any questions?
Again, are those doors at the right side of the dormer, are they visible from any angle?
Just Steve, you can give us the direction.
Darren Kompas, the architect for the project. The doors at the roof level will not be visible. They are -- that's good to hear. So, kind of the roof surface is visible, and we're not altering the roof line. So, we have this.
For reference, Commissioners, number seven is the one that has the ridge line.
So, this is the current ridge line, just not going to be altered. The ridge line at the highest point of the building is not visible from any point from the other way. So, therefore, those doors will not be visible.
Yes. So, I think they were originally proposing to replace it with a door, and that the application has just been revised, and they're going to retain the historical gate. Any other questions? We have a letter from the Westland Commission from the Community of York Landmarks and Preservation Committee. It's a letter in support of finding that the removal of the soled roof would be a use that is inconsistent with the character and attributes of this storehouse. And modification of the MVA would create a brand-new storefront for the community. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? We have a letter from the Westland Commission from the Community of York Landmarks and Preservation Committee. It's a letter in support of finding that the removal of the soled roof would be a use that is inconsistent with the character and attributes of this storehouse. And modification of the MVA would create a brand-new storefront for the community. Is there anything you'd like to say in response to any comments?
I just want to clarify one thing. I just want to say that the height of the parrot bit that's going to basically service the front guardrail is already about four feet high. There will not be any need for any additional ironworker guardrails. So, it's really just kind of tucked in under that front surface. So, there's not going to be any new -- this is purely subtraction. It's not addition.
Great. Yes, ma'am. Plantings, those to be added to the --
I don't think we're going to be doing any extensive green roof plantings or anything like that.
I think that would stick up.
Not that it's proposed. But no large trees, I don't think. It's a fairly small parrot.
It could be an umbrella. Any other questions? Do you have a motion to close the hearing? Any thoughts?
It's a nice space.
It's a nice space, and it's not visible from a public way. And I think the areaway change is modest. Just enlarge the steps slightly to make it easier access.
Not our problem, but if water keeps you ready, you're going to go.
Yes. Okay, great. So, let me go first.
In the matter of LPC 19-15-98, Seven Barone Place, Bedford Historic District, Neo-Brett-style rowhouse designed by Thomas B. Jackson, building 1881. The application is to alter the areaway paving and understood gate to construct a roof terrace. I note that the building's style, scale, and details are among the features because he is a special architectural historic character of the Bedford Historic District. And I recommend approval, finding just proposed operations to accommodate the new terrace. At the front, this lowest roof will not be visible from any public view or player, and will be a minimal intervention that will maintain the expression of the original volume of the building. But the terrace will be set within the existing roof pitch and will not encompass the entire width of the roof, leaving the historic dormer and most of the original existing roof pitch intact, and will not detract from the architectural character that's used in the front or rear subs. The proposed excavation of the front areaway to enlarge the landing will be keeping with expanded landings found in quarters of similar aging style found elsewhere in the historic district, and in conjunction with replacing the existing concrete paving with the building as streetscape. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the building and origin of the district.
Thank you.
Next up is item number three. This is LPC 19-2618, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the row of Brooklyn, block sixteen sixty-nine, lot seventy-seven, two-eleven McDonough Street, Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. Neo-Brett-style rowhouse designed by Thomas B. Jackson, building eighteen eighty-one. The application is to legalize the installation of windows and the painted wall mural without landmark preservation permission permits and install new storefronts in the middle signage and area free access. I note that the building's style, scale, and details are among the features because he is a special architectural historic character of the Bedford Historic District. And I recommend approval, finding just proposed operations to accommodate the new terrace. At the front, this lowest roof will not be visible from any public view or player, and will be a minimal intervention that will maintain the expression of the original volume of the building. But the terrace will be set within the existing roof pitch and will not encompass the entire width of the roof, leaving the historic dormer and most of the original existing roof pitch intact, and will not detract from the architectural character that's used in the front or rear subs. The proposed excavation of the front areaway to enlarge the landing will be keeping with expanded landings found in quarters of similar aging style found elsewhere in the historic district, and in conjunction with replacing the existing concrete paving with the building as streetscape. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the building and origin of the district.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ian Pollan, Preservation Staff. This item is two-eleven McDonough Street, which is located at the northeast corner of McDonough Street and Marcus Garvey Boulevard in the Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. I'll be presenting the background information on behalf of the applicant, and then I'll be speaking to the historical appropriateness. This application is to legalize the replacement of select windows and installation of a painted wall mural, and also to replace the storefront infill at this corner and install a area-free access ramp on McDonough Street. These photos show the existing site conditions. This is the storefront area proposed for replacement. There are storefronts located at the building going down Marcus Garvey Boulevard. It was previously a nonhistoric storefront infill. It was replaced without LPC permits. They were issued a violation. The infill was removed, and the storefront has since been boarded up, and the security gates rolled down. It was also installed without landmark permits. These photos show some of the underlying conditions at the current storefront that have dictated some of the design. There's utility lines. There's a pipe at the corner. So, keep this in mind when you take a look at their proposed infill design for some of the roof conditions. There are also two painted wall murals. This one is on McDonough Street. The proposal is just to paint over the top of this, so this will disappear. The other painted wall sign is on the Marcus Garvey Boulevard side. Their proposal to retain this wall mural. And so, that requires public hearing. This elevation shows the windows that were replaced without permits and also the applicant has requested to legalize these windows. On the Marcus Garvey Boulevard elevation, you see these are highlighted. The prior windows were removed and were replaced with slightly smaller windows with infill panels at the header. At the McDonough Street elevation, it's these three windows here, and these were replaced with smaller windows with infill panels at the sill. So, the window size cannot line up with the basic roof size. And then, this is an elevation in section three. In a close-up photo, you can see where the infill panel was installed, for the header condition. And then, this one shows the sill condition, which was actually panned over. This is a rendering of the proposed storefront. It's wood with a black finish. It has a wood bulkhead, a concrete curb, display windows with transom, and a sign man at the top. And then, you can also see the area-free access ramp here on McDonough Street. These were just the existing conditions that were getting removed. And here is a plan view of the proposed storefront. So, you can see there's a recessed entry proposed on Marcus Garvey, double doors, and a main cabinet with a area-free access ramp there. And then, this is just addressing the wall murals again, and that to be finished with brick. This wall mural to remain. And then, this elevation shows the Marcus Garvey Boulevard elevation, showing the bulkhead, display windows, recessed entrance. And then, this, you'll remember, is where the -- there was a column, structural column at the corner. And then, this is the McDonough Street elevation, showing what was proposed there. This is where the utilities were installed, hence the kind of wire-wood infill. This is sectioning. This is a little bit more close-up, so you can see the articulation that's proposed, both at the panel bulkhead and at the framing elements. And then, this detail shows the area-free access ramp. The ramp is at its highest point, is taller than six inches, so it requires a railing, and that's what the district proposed area requirement for that ramp. And then, these are the renderings of the finished permit. And Leonard Calchimero, the architect, and Ian Estaniel, the owner, are here and available to address the historical appropriateness and answer any questions.
My name is Leonard Calchimero. I'm the architect. The facade that we're proposing is a wooden facade, more keeping with the historical history of the building, so that it's wood and glass, wooden bulkhead, very simple. The ramp is something that, of course, is needed for hand-me-down axes. The railing is a simple pipe rail, not detract from the rest of the facade. Sign man is just above the window, and we don't know what the sign is going to be at this point, but that's the space for the sign. Detail of the ramp and the facade, so we can tell on the different side. The bulkhead, as you can see, is wood in a historical fashion. This sign is almost destroyed already, so that we're not -- the concept is to restore the brick on this facade. The other sign, the other mural on the other side will be maintained and restored.
I have a question about the sign right there.
Yes, sir.
Is that door on the bottom sent from the ADA?
Well, we only have that one axis for ADA. It goes into the same space. So, in that reason, we have the axis on the other side.
Okay, are there any questions?
All the walls of the building had been painted previously. I guess you'll say that later, right?
Yes.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. We'll go to public testimony, and we'll come back to you. Jesse Denno?
Jesse Denno for the Historic District Council. The storefront is quite attractive and is made in quality materials, and the windows should adhere to the same standard of clarification. HPC does not object to the painted murals on the building. It actually finds them hoverneckular consistent with the Stuyvesant Heights neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to say something? We have a letter, a resolution from Community Board Three, not marks of configuration, that recommend the support of the application with following stipulations, that there may be a cornice over the signboard that is continuous around the building corner and designed to natural reference the existing cornice above the large mural, that they consider a particular sign on Marcus Garvey Boulevard facade, consider it storefront, and consider ignoring the presence of all existing murals. So, just, I think, you know, the question about signage is if there is some certain signage that in the future could be approved by a staff, but there is no sign proposal before us today. I guess the community will just be thinking ahead and making the translations. But the use also suggests a cornice to help that's on the board. Would you like to respond to any of the comments?
Well, adding the cornice over the facade is going to limit the amount of space that will be necessary, will be needed for the sign. And for that reason, we don't think it's really necessary to keep the historical nature of the building.
I think that there are some votes for a staff level approval. The staff can approve letters within the signboard that are proportional to the signboard, but no more than eighteen inches high. And the signboard is to be two inches. So, it seems like you could put a little bit of molding at the top and not otherwise be approved by staff.
Well, the design decision was that a little bit of molding wouldn't be meaningful, and that's why we came up with this design.
Thank you. Any other questions? Questions about the windows? Okay, all right. So, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
One second. Thank you.
Would anyone like to say anything?
I think that, in general, the approach is okay. Looking at the drawings, it seems like their data is not seen extended enough, but it seems that there are a lot of inconsistencies in detailing how the panels are together, what the corner here is, and not sure what that texture is. So, I think if the staff will refine that stuff. And I also think that they might want to be not using birch and how long it'll last as an absurd material. So, those are staff-level comments. Because upstairs windows, I think they should be made for our clients.
I know that it stays like that much, but the windows that have the extra infill panel sill, those pat portion may not be as visible as it is on the windows where the panels in the upper portion. I don't know if people feel that all of them should be replaced with a different status, to match the size of the opening of the two of the sill or the panels of the sill could be cut. Yes, ma'am. They look to be fairly aged and not in recognition. That bottom painting is coming away, so it seems like it's beneficial to the first of those. Great. And the painting with the obvious letter of view as well.
Just to address that, I would ask them to pull the painting off, so this is what you're seeing is very delicate work.
I'm assigning, I think, you know, it's fine to replace this historic sign. She, you know, doesn't have to be rich.
All right, great. So, I think we're going to make a motion to approve the storefront and deny the windows patches.
In the matter of LPC nineteen- two-six-one-eight, two-eleven McDonough Street, Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. The application is to legalize the installation of windows and a painted mural without landmark preservation permission permits, and to install new storefront infill, signage, and area-free access. I note that the style, scale, materials, and details of the building are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of this Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. I recommend approval of qualifications, finding that the removal of existing modern storefront infill, which was installed without landmark preservation permission permits, will eliminate unnecessary alterations that detract from the building. And the design of the new storefront, featuring a recessed entrance, locked with frame, and panel bulkheads with a concrete curb, clear glass, display windows with transoms, and wooden sunbands, will recall historic storefront infill, built as of this age and type, and will not preclude the future restoration of the terracotta above this storefront infill. The new storefront infill at this location will be consistent with existing storefronts elsewhere on the building, which have been replaced with variety of materials and configurations. That installation of the ramp in McDonough Street facade will provide direct access into the storefront, that leaves the main engine as a legitimate feature. That the proposed concrete beam with a simple black metal railing is a material that is compatible with the building and consistent with sidewalk building materials, and the installation will not fall untainted to itself. But the painted wall mural on Marcus Garvey Boulevard is reminiscent of, in place at similar location to the historic painted advertising sign that is present at the building in nineteen forty's text photograph. That the placement window sashes match the historic windows and materials, finish, operation, configuration, and that the ceiling and the pan is installed prior to preservation of the building, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the building and the historic and historic. However, I find that the replacement window sashes that were sized incorrectly are not included in the historic dimensions and details. Therefore, I recommend that these windows be replaced with new windows to match the historic condition and the cabinet work with staff on details of the storefront.
And if you're looking at the legalization, deny for the windows.
The legalization of the existing windows in store.
All in favor?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is number four, LPC one-nine- three-zero-nine-three-eight. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the row of Brooklyn, block four-four-four, lot five, three-thirty-seven Point Street in Carroll Gardens Historic District. Neo-Brett-style rowhouse designed by Alvin Holland, building thirty-seven-four. The application is to replace the sidewalk.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good evening, House of Preservation Staff. I will be presenting this on behalf of the owner. Additionally, the owner, a official of the state, but today not of the resident, has been nominated. This is three-thirty-seven White Street in the Carroll Gardens Historic District, the president of Carroll Streets. This is an application for sidewalk replacement. The proposal is to remove deteriorated portions of bluestone that is adjacent to the front curb, retaining sound-sense pieces of the area adjacent to the curb, and retaining the bluestone slabs that are adjacent to the property and resetting them. This is some existing additions, as seen here. Additionally, these are text photos. The Commissioners will note that recently there was approval at three-thirty-five Point Street, which is the adjacent property. You'll note here that at the time of the text photo, that there was some deterioration that was occurring and some patching at that time. And the proposal that was approved at three-thirty-five was identical, which was to remove deteriorated pieces of bluestone and replace them with tinta concrete, as needed. This is just showing the existing conditions in plan, indicating the broken flags, and then the areas to be replaced with tinta concrete, and then in the second.
Any questions? Let's call me Jesse.
Call me Jesse. Jesse, in the Historic District Council. This is a rather broad sidewalk. It includes stones of view, is a valuable feature of the old Carroll Gardens neighborhood. Replacing a portion of the sidewalk with concrete or remaining undamaged areas of bluestone pillars will appear less satisfactory. Instead of a mix of imperiality and side-by-side, would be ideal if only, only bluestone.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have a resolution from the community board. It's additionally approved as long as there became as much of the existing bluestone bonding, tinta, and concrete as needed, which is actually what the proposal is for. And it is identical to the neighbors, which we recently approved. What was interesting in the document is that --
What was interesting, when we saw this, we saw neighbor applications, that already by the time of the tax, the pieces that were curved, that probably was trapped. My understanding is that there is traffic that was on the sidewalk for this situation. Any, any last questions or, if you're a little close, we didn't know. We did. We have to close the hearing.
Start moving.
All in favor? Is everybody comfortable with it? If there's some, that would be the neighbor.
In the matter of certificate of appropriateness, we are Brooklyn, LPC nineteen three oh nine three eight, three thirty seven White Street, Carroll Gardens Historic District. New Brookside Row House designed by Alfred Mullin in the building in eighteen seventy four. Application is to replace the sidewalk. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Carroll Gardens Historic District, and that the sidewalk, even though on White Streets, is a mixed with bluestone and concrete. I pray to note that the Commission recently approved sidewalk replacements in the corner of the building, approx. three thirty five White Street, under certificate of appropriateness nineteen three two four seven nine, issued by appropriate officers of twenty eighteen, including removal, removing, uh, select deteriorated bluestone, taking most of the ten portions of sidewalk adjacent to the curb, and installing bluestones and concrete paving as storage and that existing, uh, bluestone flags, and retaining and resetting the existing large sign, bluestone flags adjacent to the property. I recommend approval, finding that the deteriorated condition of some of the existing bluestone pavers warrants their replacement, that the large, um, bluestone pavement will be reset and consolidated there by a conservancy commitment historic fabric, that the new concrete pavers will be tended to match the color of the dated bluestone, and that the proposed work will maintain continuous sidewalk treatment along this bridge of the block and will not detract from the special historic and architectural character of the streets.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. So thank you. Fine, great.
Hey, Commissioners, just one note, we are skipping item number five today. That was laid over at the last minute. That's a pass step. So we're moving to item number six, LPC one nine dash three zero one five five, an application for a certificate of appropriateness for Manhattan, block one ninety five, block thirty, eighty eight to White Street, the Trebek East Historic District. It's an Italian-made New Brookside Row House, designed by Henry Engelbert in the building in three seventy seven, sixty eight. And the application is to install a flagpole and banner.
Good morning, Commissioners, James, Chriskey, open up the commission's staff. The White Street is at the northeast corner of Cortland Alley and White Street in the Trebek East Historic District. The application is to install a flagpole and banner. Historically, the building was originally built without flagpole. The flagpole appeared early on in the twentieth century in early historic photos, as in this nineteen forty tax photo. Owner Gerald Weinstein, whose family has owned the building since nineteen fifty, will discuss other aspects of the application. Thank you.
My family's owned eighty White Street since nineteen fifty. My parents are the tool manufacturing company that operated on Duane Street, then Warren Street, and then once built it from Jacob Clouse. And we're at the final stages of a ten million dollar, uh, use change renovation and complete restoration of all the architectural details as approved by the Commission. Thank you. And, uh, one of our goals is to create, uh, a new arts center in the now burgeoning arts district that is Trebek East and West, south of Canal, clustered around Broadway. And, and so there's a number of galleries that have moved into the area, just like Alexander Bowman, Postmasters, Patrick Parish, Hal Brum, Ronald Tillman, and Muriel Duncan. And right now, we are planning in our building, in the basement of ground floor, to have artist space. They have submitted renovations to assist their entrance and exits. And on the second floor, we are going to have the Bronx Museum of the Arts. It's going to have a Manhattan location for their program called Artists in Market Place. And they had a browsing party a couple of weeks ago for their opening. And so we would like to brand this building as an arts district location, hence the banner eighty White Street, so that people walking to the district will immediately know where to go to find great and powerful. Thank you.
Is there any questions?
The, this is the staff. The flagpole locations from there, I told you earlier, originally, I'm, I think that I'm seeing that some of the older.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, so, um, while the building was not built with a flagpole, the flagpole that appears in the historic photos, the equipment for that is still present.
And that's the location they're going to use?
That's the location. And they are going to be examining through years to use this.
But that has not been used prior to forty.
That goes back at least till nineteen forty, probably, I believe, since nineteen twenty.
All right, well, okay, will we test the movement? Jesse, go now.
Jessica, Historic District Council. We have to provide documentation of the existing flagpoles out of the salvages of this building. But it's unfair if this hardware will be used to support the proposed flag. Without details how to use the flagpole attached, it was difficult to evaluate the specific dimension that would be interest to the past buyers of the building. Regardless of the attachment, we've recently found the lack of supply down in the building's address over scale. Thank you.
Do we have a resolution from the committee board on, regarding the total of the application? Do you want me to just speak to the attachment? I believe it's attached to the wood still in the frame, right?
Yes, that's correct. Um, there is, you can see the attachment as it exists right now. There's some debate, uh, whether or not this can be reused. The metal plate here is attached to the stone sill, excuse me. And just with a flagpole this narrow, it still has the two cables that come out. I'm forgetting what the term for that is. What's the flagpole here?
And the, so those two wires would be attached to the wood frame, doesn't it?
That's, and actually, those two, um, pieces, you can see over here, aircraft cables, that, those little hinges are still present.
Any other questions? Any other questions in the hearing? All in favor? Any comments? Yes?
I'm in complete support of flags generally, and this one at this size, I think, is exciting when they're appropriate in scales.
Any other questions? There's a store president for a flagpole on this building, and this building is large enough that his president's flagpole won't fall apart. Well, that will, thank you.
I just want to say, yeah, it's very simple. I like the fact that, you know, level concept of including everything in the building of this, and very streamlined of engagement.
Here, I believe it's your turn. Another fee, eighty two White Street, Trebek East Historic District. Application is to install a flagpole, and then, I note that the building's scale, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Trebek East Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that there is historic precedent for a flagpole at this location while it's written, that the length of the flagpole is well proportioned to the facade, and that the location will retain the symmetry of the facade, that the attachment will not cause direct damage to the facade, that installation of the flagpole and banner will approve the approval of a staff level bracket sign at the ground floor, and the presence of the, of the flagpole as the only protective side will ensure that the unconnected amount of signage will not affect on the building, that the building is adjacent to the alley on one side and the other building on the other, making for an eclectic street skate, therefore, the flagpole will not fall under attention or distract from the uniform street skate. And that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the building, the street skate for the historic building. Second. All in favor? All right. Approved, thank you.
Moving to item number seven, this is LPC one nine dash two five seven seven four, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in Manhattan, block forty nine, block eighteen, one ninety six Spring Street, Sullivan Thompson Historic. Art and craft style, tenement building designer, Smith with the building employee. The application is to replace storefront.
Good morning, Commissioners, and the members of the Preservation Staff. The item number is for one ninety six Spring Street in the Sullivan Thompson Historic District. The building is located mid-block on the south side of the street, um, with Sullivan Thompson Streets. I'll be running through the puzzle, and we have to listen for any additional questions that we have here. For your reference, here are some existing conditions for the tax, including the street skate and the storefront itself. Our proposal is to replace storefront infill shown here, which will also approve the removal of this weight box on being filled as present at the time of designation of this historic district. Some existing conditions elevation and a proposed condition of elevation. The proposed condition will include wood vault heads, and operable display windows. It has the existing conditions plan, followed by the proposed conditions plan, as well as the section of the building for the storefront. Commissioners, please note that the proposed outline shown in these renderings that are the remainder of the unit do meet the Commission's rules and will be approved as staff level clear public right. As I mentioned, we have to consider any additional questions.
Is there any who'd like to add?
Thank you. Dave Nicholson asked me on architects. Our intention here is to match the apartment entry. So we will modify framing for the windows, the color of that framing, the color of the surround, all the entry which was rehabilitated prior to designation of this area. The storefront you see on the eastern side of the building, which is the more brown color, was actually reviewed and approved by the Commission in April of last year. But our intention is to match the apartment entry. And as the floor was mentioned, we worked with staff to comply to the extent possible with all the Commission's guidelines for this type of storefront. We are here specifically because of the operable windows. The operable windows are very important to the, to the tenant. It's very consistent with what's happening here on Spring Street. There are many businesses that open their outside, they're, they're re-sizing the outside of a restaurant, and that's what we're trying to achieve. And just a side note, we will be making the interest for this detailed story, uh, reassessment of current.
Any questions?
Is there a reason why the transom, the transom line up with the, those below? Where it seems like they do on that one.
The door transom?
The transom, yes. They, they line up with this, uh, module. It's very interesting, the building is not symmetrical. You see that the window pattern above doesn't match the pattern of storefronts on either side of the building. But it was a design decision, uh, if, if the Commission is, is, uh, modified, I think it certainly makes the justice.
All right, we'll take testimony and come back.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? All right, well, we have a resolution from Committee Board two recommending to not nail the storefront in this building, the windows are on wood, and approval of the black color wood bulkhead, restoration of the water. So do you want to just speak to the materials?
I, I will mention that the, um, the operable windows, the window framing system shows aluminum for its functionality, and it matches the residential entry, which is also aluminum. We selected wood for the sill so we could achieve the type of detailing of the panel that we wanted to achieve. It's very difficult to do.
Are there any other questions? A motion to close the hearing?
Sure. One second.
All in favor? Thoughts on the, to the material configuration of the storefront? If you think that Michael suggested that aligning the mounting with the operable leaves, and then maybe the door channels also align with that, which is an organization.
Yeah, and, and as well, should the line horizontal?
Transom bar?
Yeah.
Any word with that in designation?
Yeah. Building one ninety six Spring Street, Sullivan Thompson Historic District, the application is to replace the storefront infill. The variable for this style, scale, materials, and details are continued to the special architecture of the storefront in Sullivan Thompson Historic District. There's a note, the existing operable doors, and the title is "Designation of District", the recommendation for the application sign, the building not to move, but the action of the building is to maintain the original structure. But the overall recording, the software ratio, composition of the storefront, including selected transoms and ceiling, and store, and vault head, is consistent with the storefront and storefronts, and saving the size of the next historic. The temporary void, the opening, the, the, and the closing of the ceiling, we've modest sized, uh, characters in the area on the storefront conditions, including the flagpole doors throughout the historic district, and the profile, general proportions, and combination for the metal building, and the late central expansions, and building base in the outstanding avenue street state. And if we want to start finishing with the new historic door, how the building, however, the recommendation, the degree of the storefront, uh, to realize that the transom lines, the walk, the lines of each other, and align with the, uh, previous work.
I have a question.
Second.
All in favor? Screwed with that much?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Index up is item number eight, this is LPC one nine dash one five nine zero one, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in block five twenty five, fourteen seventeen King Street in the Carroll Gardens Historic District. Federal style row house, designed by William Chriskey, in building three point six. Application is to construct a rear addition, modify the, the, excavate the rear yard, and the kitchen. yard, and the kitchen.
This item is number 17, King Street, located on the north side of King Street, which you can see here, 36th Avenue and Clark Street, in the Charles King Van Dam Historic District. The proposed location will be in the rear facade, the rear yard, and this is incentive property. The proposal is to demolish an existing nonhistoric single-story addition, and a deteriorated rear brick masonry facade. And construct a new two-story brick masonry rear addition with a roof deck and rear metal stairs, in conjunction with extending the basement to the rear lapel. In addition, the proposal seeks to modify the roof, a modern rear door. And the existing, as a centering, and also removing the plain masonry chimney, which is here, and is shown in the 1940s house photo, but it's plain. None of the proposed work will be visible in conjunction with the front facade of the house. The proposed work, the rear facade, will be visible on 6th Avenue. The architect, Annie Lowe of Cote of Architecture, and Hugh Correia Seco of Cote of Architecture are here to discuss the design and answer any questions. Thank you.
As we've been mentioned, the existing house has a significant deteriorated rear facade. The past owners attempted to aggress the buckling that's evident here, but it was clearly not central engineered, it was a central diamond plate connected to an interior plaster wall, as you can see, it's like putting a staple in a... So essentially, the homeowner will have this at a significant expense to rebuild this wall and make it structurally sound. In doing so, that creates an opportunity to essentially provide the homeowner more space for building. So just to guide you to kind of the, because this is a storage structure, we will go through all the requirements as we part of the remarks for the application, according to 20pm, 10ke. We will have crack monitoring and have a construction plan to document the pre-existing conditions of the neighborhood, adjacent buildings, as well as the building itself. We will have vertical and horizontal deflection monitoring, as well as visual optical inspection all in course of consideration. One of the things I want to highlight is that we will be, jump forward for a second. One of the proposals is to actually underpin the existing basement floor and actually go lower. And what this does is actually currently the building is sitting on uncontrolled fill and the foundation is a stone foundation without water, so essentially it's not exorbitant, especially considering the condition of the existing house, as well as it's proximity to the subway. And so one of the things we will be doing, lowering that to 1.6 below the current height, is I will allow the foundations, the new foundations, to sit on controlled fill, as well as we will do an underpinning four-foot sections to ensure that there will be, the building will be up to decent levels. So essentially everything will be, and we'll be doing everything within the property, so we will offset the interior basement two feet within all around, so that, again, we don't have to disturb the neighborhood as much as possible. To take you through the sequencing of the actual demolition, the first... So the first thing we'll do is essentially do a soft demo of the non-structural elevator in the home. And we will then, step by step, take down the masonry wall and build a temporary wood frame structure, two-by-fours with applied chimera on the other side, and tie it into the existing concrete. So from top down, we'll remove that, and at the rich point, we will start to underpin and also excavate the rear yard foundation. Subsequently, we would then tie back the front facade to shore it, and essentially we will then install new steel columns throughout the structure, and then install cross bracing to stabilize the tie structure. And then, bay by bay, in front to the back, we will remove the framing and spilling with the new framing. So that gives you an overview of the procedure.
So I just want to give you an overview of the various architectural descriptions of how we are going to be handling.
Can you say your name?
Oh, sorry, my name is Keith Goyet. So firstly, the scale of the rear facade, the rear addition, is in keeping with the scale of at least two other additions in the district. Just go to the last page. Here, this is at 43 King Street, which is a similar scale, although obviously the visibility is not very different, it's in the middle of the block and there is no direct visibility for the public through way. And then here, in Nine Van Dam, it's also a similar scale, there is some visibility, but it's obviously not the same in terms of compared to 17 King, where you have a full side of the scale, this is only this whole rear alleyway, but similar, both cases are similar in scale. And the other thing that we are proposing to do is maintain the current material language of the adjacent building, so using brick in the same pattern and color as the 15 King building, maintaining black windows similar to that of the adjacent buildings. And then the other thing is that we're proposing is rebuilding and relocating the central of the rear dormer, which you can better see in the elevation, actually, we can start with the existing. In both cases, 15 King and 17 King, these are not the original dormers, the original dormers were actually approximately the size of this double window and sip office, approximately just west of the central, in all cases, so neither of these buildings are, neither of these dormers are additional. So what we are planning on doing is relocating this to a central, the center of the building, the rear building, and rebuilding in the same scale as the 15 King dormer, so you can better see that in elevation. So essentially getting much closer in scale and location to the existing 15 King Street. Also, you can see in the elevation, our tendency to match the window scaling heights and sills so that there's some level continuity between the adjacent buildings. Again, I'm saying material, we're rebuilding the entire roof structure with the exact same roofing, say, the dormer, black slat, plaid equal with the dormers. And then lastly, just wants to make a review of just the configuration and why we were planning on doing the whole two-story, per the DOB specifications, the cellar and sub-seller cannot be habitable spaces, so we're not going to be able to have living room spaces, living rooms, or anything like that. So essentially, the upper floors, the first floor, second, third, are the real habitable spaces, with the second floor being where three children's bedrooms will be climbed from, and there's two children, that's planning on a third, so that is actually very important in terms of being able to place three full bedrooms on that floor, which requires the full extension through the second floor, so we have a review as if we only had a single story extension. And then the master bedroom is on the third floor. And further down on House Street, you can see that there's not any significant modifications, other than being able to more clearly see the dormer that's relocated, but as I said, again, it's going to be much closer naturally to the two stories dormer, and other than that, we'll only be able to see a small scale that we're having upstairs.
Any questions?
Yeah, could you go back to the one we said earlier from Mr. Sett? Yeah. What is the detail happening with those black stripes?
Oh, these are the, these are the relieving handles that they put in there. These are just, I mean, they won't be that, they won't be typical ripose building issues.
I mean, is it your intention to make them into a kind of architectural detail, or is it just like you're just showing them to be superficial and done with?
Just showing, it wouldn't, it would be very typical of a relieving handle, it wouldn't be that visible, just wanted to make clear that.
We have still found that helps break down the reading of scale.
So you're going for, you want to reveal there, you don't want it to look like the rest of the building where the coursing, so at the same, you want to make a reveal.
Right, right, but not as dominant, this is normal dominant, it would actually be, but you would be able to see what we're doing.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I have a question on the dormer, is it, when you reconstruct it and center it, are you making it taller or are you keeping height?
The height will stay as it is. It might, it may go to functions. Sorry, it's a little tall.
And it cuts through the...
Right, it does cut through the people, although the key line will stay as it is.
But we could consider doing that, we tried.
And the height is not inherently tied to anything, it could be altered, that was an issue.
Thank you, I'll take this one and we'll come back to it. All right, any other questions?
Hello, we need someone to show up from the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation. An important part of the mission of GBSHT is to document the history and advocate the preservation of federal-era houses. Federal houses are linked back to the earliest stages of our newly independent country's development and the transition of New York City from a small town to a major commercial center in metropolis. As described in the designation report written in 1966, the streets of the Charlton, King Van Dam Historic District represent the greatest display New York now has of the rare and attractive federal-style townhouse. At this stretch of King Street, on the edge of bustling commercial thoroughfare of Sixth Avenue, we have four adjacent relatively intact federal rowhouses, especially numbers 15 and 17. That is a rare occurrence, but what is almost miraculous is that the nearly intact rear facade of these houses, which are visible from Sixth Avenue. Thus, the rear of these buildings is almost as important as the front. Because of that, any changes to the rear of number 17 need to be considered carefully, not just for the impact to that structure, but the ensemble of the visible rear row. The proposed demolition of the rear facade and the two-story rear addition completely disregard the significance of not just number 17, but the other federal houses surrounding it. The loss of visible historic material goes against the purpose of landmarking. Additionally, the proposed rear addition is wholly inappropriate on the nearly 200-year-old structure. It would also block the view of the rear facade of number 17 and 21. For all these reasons, we urge the Commission to reject the proposed rear addition, which completely disregards the reverence due to this unique surviving piece of New York's historic and architectural heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse?
Jesse, get up for the historic district council. In August of 1906, the newly formed New York's Preservation Commission prioritized the building of Charles King Van Dam Historic District, noting that on King Street, number 16 and 17, you most clearly retain our federal flag or and retain the original pitch crews, dormers, and appliances. This description written over 50 years ago still accurately survives the building. Even more impressive is that the building survives in nearly 200 years, more or less unscathed. The proposal favors the building in 15 King Street as the most significant loss of historic fabric HBC has encountered in a long time. This application proposes to totally demolish the entire roof wall of the building, build a full head addition, and under this theme, obliterate either the roof story and the store of dormer. The partially bound wall produced by the application is not assessed with any total demolition intended extension, which is what this applicant seeks. This building owns twin, number 15, now identical to our configuration, both in regards to replacement of punch openings and the off-center location of the single large dormer. Most significantly, both rear facades of these buildings are highly visible from Sixth Avenue, but one can catch a glimpse of two houses that are original form in New York's earliest days of the city. Unlike other federal houses with conditionists approved enlarging or creating shank moments in the rear, these propose alteration, especially the creation of a large brick extension, which will be immediately perceptible from the public leg. It's called prudent operations to rear dormers when the case of the dormers are small and mass dimensioned down on facade-based dormers. Here, the rear dormers have an unusual proportion, so much so that the size will be replicated when the new one is constructed. The HBC offered that it was far better to maintain the original dormer, rather than demolish an historic feature and then totally reconstruct the new one to simply feel like. The HBC often testifies that we don't have some rare tenders that should be respected and not violated. Writing about the few remaining federal houses in New York City, it always has support with what classic New York roads, the Vesta course, Green Village, and the richest area of its Charlton, King, and Van Dam streets. The interior program of this trophy house is severely threatening the very nature of the federal home. If the applicant desires more square footage, we ask why federal-style rowhouses impacted the applicant in the first place, if these structures were purpose-built to be diminutive modest houses. There is a budget to grant four and five-story townhouses that are not designated for district throughout the city, that would better suit this type of spacing pace. Thank you.
Thank you. And...
Hi, I'm sorry, I do not have a parent's unit, I'm just going to speak quickly. I am a resident of 21 King Street, which has a carriage house at the back, and I am a resident in the carriage house, so representing I am myself, but the owners of the front house, and the neighbors that are at 19 and 13, because we all were at the original committee board hearing about this addition. As I already mentioned, these four houses, 15 through 21, are some of the original federal style houses. I personally have a background in historic houses, I worked with this old house for many years, and any kind of addition like this on the back would not only cut the plane, the intact plane of the four houses, as you can see very visibly from Sixth Avenue, but it's completely out of character for a federal-style house. The back of these houses used to have a carriageway, and in the 1970s, they built a firehouse that covered over the original carriageway, but there you used to be able to go all the way down behind all these houses, and the last message of that is a view from Sixth Avenue, which is not only going to be obliterated from the Sixth Avenue side, but from the garden side, which is where we reside. So, you know, I don't know if I can introduce a photograph into attendance for you guys, but I took very quickly a photograph this morning from my bedroom window, and I have a couple of them, which shows the clear path that we can see all the rear facades as well from where we are, how it backed up to Sixth Avenue. You know, these are, as others have said, the original landmark properties of the Landmark Commission, and it would be a travesty to suddenly stick a big fox in the middle of it all. You know, I just hope that, you know, I understand rebuilding a dormer to character, I understand rebuilding a rear facade, I'm currently a project manager of renovations myself, I have clients who need to do work like that, but I just, the addition is abominable and hopefully I'm not...
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to... Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application?
We have a resolution from Community War Two recommending that not of the proposed extension or any extension in that it would destroy the rear facade and rear row. We've always been pleased with the rear addition in the rear group capacity. And we received a email from Christopher Guy in support of HBC's position for this opposition and saying that this application proposes one of the oldest, crude and most destructive demolitions of their fabric.
Excuse me, I was coming to speak.
Oh, please.
No, thank you. No, thank you. So you have a good photograph of, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to talk to this street. Uh, I have one photograph, which I believe.
Shoot it through your hands.
Your.
You can get your name through there.
Oh, excuse me. My name is Drew Connor. And can you hear me? My name is Drew Connor. I am the neighbor at nineteen King Street, immediately to the west of the subject property, seventeen King Street. And, uh, I reviewed last night the materials, and I see that we've got the operative thing in front of you. If I may, can I pass this on in both directions?
Yeah.
Uh, here?
Yeah.
Just go. I was, uh, looking at the submission for a landmark for advocacy, and again, at the year ago submission to, submitted to CB two, and I could not find any difference. So I went page by page, and I found a difference. And it really is simply the timing of this photograph, where what you are showing there is what was submitted to CB two. And in the package that I believe was submitted to, uh, to Landmarks, uh, was the lower photograph, which shows a much shadier picture obscuring the approachment into the rear yard. Uh, I, I can only say that I don't know, I'm not an arborist, but I would hope that that tree is a fig tree, because it's a fig leaf that's been used. I would like to, uh, beg the Commissioners to indulge us, that they keep in mind that the Charlton King and Van Dam Historic District is not a historic district. Six months a year, seven months a year, very much so. It's a historic district in one of the oldest, twelve months a year. And in fact, it's one of the most successful, one of the oldest districts, because some of these houses are the oldest houses of their style in New York City. This particular string of four houses shown here date back to the eighteen twenties. I'll get back to that in a moment. Since I walked in late with this, and I apologize, I have a tiny moment for this meeting. I would, I would just like to say that on behalf of myself, our neighbors, including neighbor to the west of me, Dr. Rosa Gill, and her sister, uh, Galia Martinez, uh, and I believe Alex Berman is here too, that we are concerned about two things. Now, I cannot more eloquently state what has already been stated in the Community War Two letter to the Landmarks Commission, uh, dated October twenty-three, two thousand seventeen, which details the specifics of their unanimous rejection. How, I'm sure you've been through all.
You did, did you tell, you know, the clock has already gone off, but I'm really happy to summarize it.
Okay, I'll, then I'll make two quick points, and then I'll sit down. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so my two quick points, since I can't say anything better than what's been said, is I would simply implore the commission to defend our historic district, which has been a very successful historic district for many, many years, dating back to the sixties. There are light and air issues that I know are not always the domain of, of LPC, but I would urge you to consider, because in nineteen seventy, as you can see, the approachment to the south of the new, then new, uh, fire station, uh, moved to the south, and then this proposed approachment to the north dragged dramatically narrows the light and air that are going to the multifamily units to the west, which we think is an unnecessary hardship on those families. So that's my first point. My second point is simply this, is that I would beg the Commissioners to keep in mind that these are not townhouses. These are row houses. They're not independent structures. And as a result, they share walls and they share common boundaries. I have seen nothing thus far from this middle that suggests that any appropriateness has been considered with respect to the structural implications of this rather massive encroachment into the rear yard. It will place vertical and horizontal loads were not admitted since the eighteen twenties. These buildings, as you know, are supported from the perimeter, creating a diagram effect in the middle, and any undue torque or torsion is going to have an effect on all the neighborhood, not simply this building's seventeen piece. So I am asking for you to consider that in your rendering of a decision, and we urge you to deny this application. Uh, the, the last point being that I understand that those structural factors are normally the remain of DOB. However, by the time any potential destruction happens and DOB gets involved, it'll be too late. And it may be, it may, the destruction may be so vast that it could be part of it. So I ask that the Commissioners please take into consideration not only the light and air issues in addition to the CB two, but also the fact that the very nature of these structures is such that they are especially fragile and they need to be treated as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to your comments?
Um, I would just like to respond to, uh, Detective's last comment regarding the structure of this building. Uh, we missed the beginning of the presentation, but we did actually go through a various factors, civic and sequence of construction. And I wanted to highlight, clarify that the existing condition is not stable. So leaving it as it is, that's more important than rebuilding and underpinning the foundations. Uh, there's significance that also to the interior structure as well, which I did not point out, but is happening. And so, again, what we're doing is actually trying to make it safer condition. With regards to the, uh, to the light and air, that's actually a north-facing, uh, structure. And you would still, I mean, this, from this perspective, of course, it does hinder, but on the other perspective, you still would get the left, the required light and air. So I don't believe that that is a consideration that should affect this addition. Lastly, we also, uh, we had a statement from the client, uh, from the homeowner, who unfortunately, because of the timing shift, was not able to make it. Would now be appropriate time to read out the statement.
Again, this is a statement from the homeowner, Jennifer Cole, who lives on the way. Dear Commissioners, thank you for the time, for the time for reviewing my house. Our plan is to turn this non-complimented house into a single family, uh, a single-family house, supporting the family. We have two children and potentially one on the way. And the hope was to make this a livable, more livable house for our family. Uh, we are not developers. I'm a wife and a mother, and I want to build this house, you know, for all of my kids. We plan on, in this renovation, and we will restore the front facade and take away the non-rent structure from the back. And while we are proposing an addition that may not be, uh, to the liking of everyone in the neighborhood, we would ask that, in making your decision, that you would consider that this, the family who will be living in this house when it is ready. Thank you.
One, I just, you showed two, uh, three, two two-story additions in the block. One, I think was on a three-story building. Were they both on the three-story buildings? I suppose.
Yes.
Yep, so they were both, uh, below the top floor.
Excuse me. Nan, I don't know.
Can we have a motion close in here? All favor. Hearing is closed. Discussion, yes, on it.
So, uh, I think that I agree with, with your testimony. Uh, and I also, you know, my, my, just personal experience, I'm being a, um, a little red schoolhouse family, constantly walking on that block from two schools and, and being aware all the time of that rear, um, view because of the, the lowest opening. Um, it seems to me that the, the, it's being proposed actually, um, looks a little bit more like a firehouse. I mean, besides the, the issues of the federal staff and whether or not anything needs to be added to the rear, it almost reminds us of the, of the language of the, uh, of the firehouse to the right, the north. And I just, that makes me think that, um, and again, I don't know what the assumptions are here, but that I could imagine an extension beyond the existing, um, leg that's further in the rear of the, um, of the rear yard, which is to say that we could retain potential of this view. You wouldn't have the, you know, what you're proposing, which is an actual expansion of the physical, um, row house of the house itself, but you might have additional square feet in that back area. Again, unless we have another kind of setback. But I, I, I think that this view has to be sustained.
Thank you. That's great.
I make old, uh, opinion about federal row houses that obviously not old, but except for the Dutch farmhouses, these are the oldest houses that possibly are city. I just hold a different standard of right or wrong, that's the way I feel. I'm pretty sure few and far between, too many of them have already been mangled. They are precious, uh, to be very precious, uh, reminders of what's in these, uh, very far plans. It's important to retain. So I just hold it to a different standard. A. B, sometimes a owner is bought the wrong house. It's, it needs to be extended to some, some degree like this. Uh, and other houses in the city exist, maybe, maybe that's the way here. I just find it just entirely inappropriate, uh, any extension of, uh, like this that would obliterate the rear facade of such an old house, which is visible, particularly visible. I mean, invisible, I, I, but this is very visible, as I noted, uh, and that is, um, adds my, my thinking. I would not be opposed, uh, to a suggestion that Eddie made, uh, that more square footage be added in the rear yard, as often were in, in apparently the testimony, one nearby, you know, kind of back house. I'm not sure that means with, uh, any kind of zoning, uh, regulations now, and I'm not sure it could ever be approved at VSA, but this would be an example, to me, of where, um, city planning and so many regulations might fly in the face of what could be appropriate to add square footage to this house. But from my way of thinking, not, it's not at all sufficiently sufficient to remove. Yeah, I know the block well, too, where it's a very charming and important, uh, piece of village. I think, I agree with what's already been said about where it's a row, in terms of the fact that it's visible. I agree with Tom's point, because the properties are going to be through the corner, there you can pretty probably, uh, add considerably to the ground floor, uh, without triggering the zoning, uh, and use satellites for ventilation. But, um, I think that it's also worth noting, by the way, that this application is supposed to be fully extenuated with regard. This is another thing we really haven't talked much about, uh, in this, in this project, but we do talk about a lot of other townhouse projects. And for me, because of the visibility, the usual visibility of the, it was probably at one point the interior block, I think it's important to preserve some vestige of the possibility of planting in the future, uh, while preserving the usual live, uh, so required cases. Just here, we have the visible, which created that interior, interior character that, again, the rest of the view suggests. In terms of the dormer, if the staff confirms that it is not an official dormer in its size or configuration, I could be okay with this repositioning and even, even its height change. We have done a lot of changes to rear dormers on federal buildings. Um, I'm not sure if I remember them being visible like this, but I believe that if it retains the form and, and, uh, general appearance of, that suggests continuity with the row and staff in terms of it was official, then I'd be okay with repositioning, uh, reconstruction of the dormer, okay with the, with the flue. Uh, but I think, I think the point should be that this, this row is, is valuable. If they have five million dollars for this house, my guess is that they really need to find a place before they're down, if that budget will allow for that. Uh, this might not be a place where all the, the veterans.
I didn't really, please, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There was ever an application that I agree with, uh, what you put in my, uh, list.
I was thinking that there's only things that you might think of, as the toilet could have an addition, not such as a transformation, is if they just cut off the top floor entirely, because you've already got a wall there. If they drop it down sufficiently, it should continue to get, it should really sense of the fact that the building is, it can be a possibility, possibly would bring it up as any, but, no, just a little ring enough so it doesn't come up too much above that wall. And I think that would happen if you cut off the top story. So that's my suggestion.
Yeah, that was something I was thinking as well. Um, but my, maybe not even, I don't know how high that is, but you would have a full, that whole corridor view if it didn't exceed the top. I think what, uh, no, I think what she's recommending, I don't know if it's possible, is not to go really above the garage.
The problem is that's, that's the head of the window, right? That's the head of the first floor window. First, the second floor floor is about here. This would be a railing that would probably be required unless it was a state of still proof. So just so you know, that's probably the bulk of a one-story addition, just FYI. Right. You could make that railing out of metal, which would bring it down to around there, but it still will be a rather visible structure.
Yeah.
This will be maybe not the, I'm telling you, I can deal so much with my, maybe.
Yeah, it'll be much, maybe better.
And maybe the, I don't know how tall the floors are, maybe there's a little bit more reduction in the, through the lower floors to the floor. I have some suggestions.
I mean, I do also, I mean, I agree with all of the evidence that's, and this is just about the most, one of the most visible locations in the city for this particular, um, for this particular assemblage of historic, um, so I mean, you cannot walk or drive on, you know, beginning of Avenue of the Americas without passing this. So it does really, man, that's why I'm thinking, giving everyone pause. And, um, and, and you know, unless there's a way to, to make a first floor pretty invisible, I would have to say that, I mean, this will be smarter.
Yeah, and I agree. I think that this, um, view itself is very visible, but you really can't see what these buildings are from this view. It's sort of a special federal. It's sort of a special federal floor, completely visible in its relationship to the other buildings. There may be a one-story addition in the front that would allow to reveal that continuous line of windows at the second floor, but I'd be open to, I think as it is today, we don't have support for this application. I think, I could agree with you, Michael, on the dormer, that if it's not original, relocating it and matching the one that the adjacent building would be appropriate, but I think that needline has to carry across to make it go on to the top floor.
The fourth floor on the, on the higher level is eleven eight. The existing rear yard addition, its roof is below the second floor line, for what it's worth. And, and the other possibility is just they could still level down, which is kind of how they're doing the backyard anyway. So you could get an addition if you level it right.
I'd like to really agree with that. That's John.
Well, we struggle with non-visible additions on buildings substantially ruinous. To me, this is the free space in the landmark bingo here. We've got a very old district, a very old building, and a hundred percent visible. So, I just want to make it clear that I know we're struggling a lot with ways they can do this. If it's visible, it's not going to get my vote, no matter how it comes back. So, just to make it clear.
I think we'll take, yes, yes.
I agree with John, as it's really visible, it's a positive work, it's successful, it's very good.
I would say the same. I mean, I think slightly over that addition, but, for that addition, but not as high as what people have, just kind of fit enough to the table to be back or something.
I think also that the needline's very important, the dormer configuration, it could be modified, but the people may resist that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we'll take no action today, we've heard all the comments, so staff will work with the sort of, and we'll get that. Okay, so we, we've been a little ahead of schedule, we had that one, we got the applications on, so we are going to break for lunch now, come back at twelve thirty to have everybody's.
Is there a lot of action we haven't done there? Sure, sure. That's good. Sure.
Forty-five now.
Well, my sister-in-law, please, do that. It's still close.
I have to refuse myself. I'm just for a loss.
Okay, Commissioners, we're going to start back up after lunch with item number nine, LPC one-nine-dash-two-zero-one-zero-four, application for a certificate of residence number of Manhattan, block five ninety-two, block twelve, number four, Washington Place in Greenwich Village Historic District. Federal-style rowhouse built eighteen thirty-three. The application is to alter and raise the roof at the rear, remove a dormer, construct rooftop bulkhead, and excavate the rear yard.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, may I go ahead and say this last? The subject premises is located at one forty, Washington Place, between Sherwood Square and Sixth Avenue with the Greenwich Village Historic District. Excavation was included in the advertising scope of work, but will be limited to a small section of the rear yard, which will be in keeping with an air and white well, and will be revealed as stock. This application is to modify the rear facade and the roof, increasing the interior head height without increasing footprint. The proposal includes removing this rear section of the gable roof or dormer, increasing the height of the rear facade with these associated changes to the masonry openings and infills. So this is the existing on the left and the proposed on the right. The proposal also includes installing any section of flat roofing and constructing a stair bulkhead and installing railings. And none of these sections will be visible from any public thoroughfares. So this is section, the proposed section on the left. As a reminder, the building is part of a row of, a better number of the federal-style rowhouses, in order to increase by a floor already. And this is one of three buildings in the row which retain its original cornice line. The building retains its original roof pitch, but the other two have already been altered with newer additions and skylights, and no longer retain the gable roof pitch or historic roof line. So this is the row of the federal-style buildings. And this is posed on the rear yard, and both on the right side and the left side. Building has already been raised. The red lines show the new proposed height of the rear. This is the lower, that's from the rear. This is looking to the right side, also to the left, for the highest difference. Again, this is the elevation. You can see the proposed height is lower than the one on the left, and just will be similar, a little bit just higher on the left, on the acres. And exometric shows a bit clearer, and none of the work on the new roof will be visible from the public thoroughfare. Carl Pucci, the architect, is ready to have some questions.
Thank you. Want to add anything?
Sure. I am Carl Pucci, yeah. No, the, the building is also restricted, it's a very shallow block, it's a very narrow block, there's very little outdoor space of the yard, it's quite small, and so in an effort to make another livable space within the footprint, we wanted to actually not raise, raise the roof, but just swivel it so that it's lower in back, higher on the yard, that gives us a place to put mechanical equipment outside of the building, under the roof, and create a smaller terrace. So in the effort to get more light and air, we're taking the existing pitched roof and raising it about five feet.
Any questions?
So, so both the rooftop addition and the rear yard addition are not visible from any public thoroughfare?
They're not visible from the public. They have, in fact, they're not visible from our own yard because of the, of the pitch, you can't actually see this.
Any other questions? We'll see public testimony, I'm sure we'll be back. Kelly Carroll?
She'll tie me in, she'll tie me in at some point. The Historic District Council, this is Jessica from the Historic District Council. This application will necessarily destroy the pitched roof and dormer of the federal house, which are beloved characteristics of this style. Intercy urges the commission to retain the top floor of this row house to explore possible modifications and novel elimination of the rear dormer. Introducing glazing to the all portion of the rear facade is appropriate, but you not placing proposed on the original envelope of the house should be thoughtfully considered by Commissioners, thank you.
Willie Villachell?
Hi, I'm Willie Villachell, from the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation. Federal houses intact, side gable roofs and original dormers are rarely among New York City's federal houses. The proposed loss of the rear roof on this beautiful eighteen thirties federal rowhouse should not be committed and would amount to facadeism. We object strongly to the loss of the unusual dentil mode of molding at the ridge, and if the rear dormer is deteriorated, it should be restored. We ask that the commission deny radical alterations to the rear of the roof and leave it intact to its original nearly two-hundred-year-old form. Thank you.
Thank you. Can anyone else who would like to speak?
We have a resolution from Community Board Two that recommends approval, but does seem to note that the change in the roof would inevitably result in the removal of the original slope roof and dormer at the rear, and that the roof would be unfortunately lost, the dormer is necessary to make the top floor happen. Necessary to make the top floor happen.
But they do approve.
Ultimately, they said they approved it. Would you like to respond to the comments?
So, I cannot argue that it's regrettable that a feature of a, an old house is being altered. However, historically, this feature has been altered by almost every single building on the block, and when it's been altered, it's been altered, whether it be eighteen sixty, eighteen eighty, or nineteen twenty, it's been altered by raising it to another floor, and the dormers were lost. The, the nature of the dormer on the rear is of not stellar quality. The dormers on the front are arch, have detailed molding, and are being preserved and are being upgraded as part of our work. The dormer on the back is hardly of historic value. The reference to the cornice on the rear, I think, is a little bit facetious. There is no cornice, there is a single brick protrusion, hardly, again, of, I would say, quality either from the period or from later restrictions. And if we were to build something, we would probably upgrade that, because I mean, we'd give it a little bit more actual character.
Any questions? Can we have motion opposed in here? Okay, so, you know, what are the things that the commission has done in the past to federal buildings, because the pitch is such an identifying feature of the federal houses? We have recognized the need to get head height, and we've done it by having kind of a shed dormer, see, the profile on the side. So as you all think about what's to be proposed, you could keep that in mind as well, unless there are thoughts.
Could you go to the section, the two sections? Yeah. That was exactly what I was thinking. I, I think that the solution here is not to reconstruct the back, but to preserve the form of the roof and go create more expansive dormer. They also, they need to paralyze the back of dormer, stop short, create a little area ways, like what we saw this morning, rope. There's many solutions, but I don't think this is the right one. It, it is true that, that unlike the case we saw on King Street, this one doesn't have visibility, and it's not part of a, a semi-impact road, but I, and I think that earns them perhaps more flexibility with, with the dormer and what one does with it. But I think, yeah, it's a point that they were all modified, they were modified in order the commission was placed generally. We would today permit the removal of the front dormer and the extension of that into another story, which is going to help the line. So I don't think that's necessarily a valid precedent. But I think, I think something with the shed dormer is the right way to go. I mean, in terms of the penetration, I think the top floor penetration should be preserved, the other stuff, the tail, and the lower corners, it is okay.
Anyone? Agree?
The front, the front angle of the roof is remaining, is that what?
That's right.
Okay, so, well, yeah. In a matter of LPC nineteen-two-zero-one-zero-four, number fourteen, Washington Place, Fire Village Historic District, the application is to alter and raise the roof at the rear, remove a dormer, construct a rooftop bulkhead, and excavate the rear yard. Knowing that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that are needed for the architectural director of the Greenwich Village Historic District, I recommend approval of the modifications, finding that the proposed work will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, and will not alter the premise section of the gable roof, that the existing rear facade and rear dormer are both simply designed and altered, that their designs are not part of an existing pattern of the fine row, therefore the proposed work would not damage the building's relationship to others in a contiguous row, that the punch masonry openings at the lower floors will be well scaled to the facade. However, I find that the profile of the roof is significant and recommends the construction of a shed dormer at the rear instead of placing the roof to the center of the building solution. Second?
All clear. I approve that modification.
Next is item number ten, LPC one-nine-dash-three-zero-eight-zero-four, an application of a certificate of appropriateness of the borough of Manhattan, block seven thirteen, block seven, four sixty-one West Twenty-first Street in Chelsea Historic District. An Italian-style rowhouse built in eighteen fifty-three. Application is to construct a rooftop engine.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, which is staff here, this was the one West Twenty-first Street, living on the north side of West Twenty-first Street, between Ninth and Fifth Avenues, subject property here. And in the north of the subject property is Seven Clark Moore, New City Park. The proposal is to construct a single-story roof competition, reliving and raising chimneys. Context of the text for the definition of property after the upgrade.
Due to the existence of the park, the rooftop addition will be visible from West Twenty-second Street and the avenue. But the rear building line of the addition will be aligned with the addition that was approved by the commission on the neighborhood property. One of the raised chimneys, the front facade will be visible from West Twenty-first Street. Also, the front facade was altered prior to the designation of the Historic District in nineteen seventy, and staff has reviewed work with the front facade with staff now. The applicant, Alex Zianovich, of the Pine Press Group, will be able to answer any questions.
Do you want to add anything at this moment, or?
Not really, unless.
Okay, maybe we can come back to it. Are there any questions right now? So we'll go to public testimony. Jesse, I don't know, was it you?
Who is it?
And not Kelly?
I'm not being a song or something. Jesse from the Historic District Council. The key issue regarding this proposal is whether or not the rooftop will be visible. The president has not adequately addressed visibility assessment and use of knockdowns across the street, leaves on trees, etc., and need to lock down in this whole area to be non-secure.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the draft paper? All right, we received a resolution from Community Board Four that recommends
Just to say, as a note, the tax photo, you have squarehead openings with linkles. Those were removed prior to designation. And you can see from the current position that the recessed details above the squareheads. So such review that it was considered to be a top floor.
Okay, so I think the only comments made by the Community Board, they recommend approval with some recommended changes to the rooftop addition, which is setting it back further from the rear facade.
Those were done following the Community Board. They were originally aligned with the neighboring building from the other side, which is a single-story higher. As a matter of fact, aligned originally, qualified and was approved until the addition of the other other side. And also, the HVAC system is very relocated to the center of the addition.
They've let you address the Community Board's recommendations. Can you speak a little bit to the visibility that was created?
Yes, my name is Alex Stianovich. I'm a part of this group, and I'm architect from the job. Fortunately and unfortunately, the park in time on 22nd Street is this magnificent park with very mature trees. And the first image you see here is something I took from the start of the project beginning of this year, which was winter. But you don't see it from the front, in any case. In fact, we didn't have any photographs from that time. You do see it clearly once the foliage comes down. I've tried to kind of, in between, this is our rendered montage of our project. But it's really hard to see what we built as a mockup because of the trees now. This is the best picture that we could get in terms of visible.
Is this photo from within the park or from the street?
This is from the fence at the border of the side over 22nd. So the closest I can get to the fence, the park has been, when I'm at the present, so I really can't even get into the park.
Is it through the zoom cut back or?
Yes, this is the center. Correct. So this is really, I mean, in a month or less, you probably will be able to see more. But the foliage is dense now, but the streets are also dense. I think there is visibility for sure, because you see the neighboring one as well, in between in the same manner.
Okay, and the neighboring one is the one commissioned previously?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And not visible from the front?
No.
Motion opposed to hearing?
Second.
Favor, I propose any thoughts?
Comment of the, not visible in the front, good. Visible in the back part. However, I don't find that in any way distracts from my understanding that the original is the building below, and now it's just an option. We all hand over the issues to the Community Board.
Agree?
In a matter of 461 West 21st Street in Chelsea Historic District, an application to construct rooftop addition. I note that the building's scale, style, materials, and details are a little bit future. It contributes to the special architectural and historic character of the Chelsea Historic District. I further note that the Commission approved the rooftop addition at 459 West 21st Street under Certificate of Appropriateness 99-376 or LPC-99-3761, issued on December 11, 1998. Recommend approval, noting that the construction of the proposed rooftop addition will not alter, damage, or distort the historical features of the building. But except for a flue, none of the proposed work will be visible in conjunction with the front facade of the house. That the flue will be comparable in terms of material and seen from public thoroughfare will be in keeping with similar installations found elsewhere in the street's case in terms of displacement inside. The proposed rooftop addition and railing will only be visible from a public thoroughfare from select locations at a distance over a secondary facade adjacent to an existing rooftop addition, similar size and placement at the neighboring house 459 West 21st Street. That the simple design and light colors will blend with the color of the neighboring addition and help the addition receive more view. That the rectangular shape of the proposed addition will present a silhouette which is typical of rooftop additions on rowhouses in historic districts. And that the work will not detract from the facility of Chelsea Historic District.
Second question. Favor.
Item 11, this is LPC 19-27725. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 819, Lot 39, 22 Fifth Avenue in the Lee's Mall Historic District. Neil Brunson's store, openly designed by Robert Minnick, and currently in 1800. Application is to construct a rooftop addition.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Deliane's Historic Preservation Staff. 122 Fifth Avenue is located on the west side of Fifth Avenue in the middle of the block between East 18th Street and 19th Street in Lee's Mall Historic District. Your proposal is to construct a three-story rooftop addition. The addition will be visible over secondary facade and an elevator block will be visible over the primary facade. I would now like to use Sean Lozler to describe the proposal.
Hi, I'm Sean Lozler, Perkins Eastern Architects. Thank you for having us today. This is 122 Fifth Avenue. Our goal with this was to do a vertical expansion, which had no visibility from the main facade, which is on Fifth Avenue, and very minimal visibility from the west facade, because there's an empty lot next door and also on 18th Street, a three-story building. It's sort of an interesting lot. Our clients, the property companies, owns this lot. They've also purchased the air rights control up for West 18th Street, and they also own 717th Street, which is a parking lot right now. And they own 120 Fifth Avenue. So although the T-shaped building is building where we're doing, it's a vertical expansion. In essence, all of these lots work together with the same ownership, and some of the floors are combined, actually, is being 120 Fifth Avenue, 122 Fifth Avenue. We did look at a precedence in the neighborhood, where there were vertical expansions, what was visible, what wasn't visible, what was contractual and what wasn't. And through this was sort of where we departed from. Let's just sort of zoom in, showing this is 122 Fifth Avenue, this is 120 Fifth Avenue, which is the same ownership. And then the 4 West 18th Street and 7 West 17th Street, which had the air rights, which had a vertical expansion. Our goal, as I said, was to do a addition which was not visible, set back from Fifth Avenue, which was the most important. In fact, the setback in the height was really determined by what the side angles were from up and down Fifth Avenue. And that's sort of where we came up with where the facade is on the facade where it's not visible. It's just a very clean, modern facade. The idea is that this expansion is to be able to add some additional square footage to the building, which will attract the type of tenants that they need to contribute as an enablement here as buildings and users are changing. This is an existing section, showing a section through Fifth Avenue here, a 10-story building. Currently, it has various mechanical equipment, water tanks, things like that up on top. And this is showing the three, really two and a half, sort of like I say, that it's a setback on the third floor here, the expansion. And what we will be doing is expanding the elevator blockhead to have a new elevator to the top floors. But also, we have the opportunity to take the water tanks and move everything down to the basement, put pumps in, modernize the equipment in the building, and be able to reduce the mechanical up on the roof. This is a section, north-south, from 18th Street to 17th Street, showing this, a 10-story existing building with the proposed addition on it. And again, setting back on both of the side streets also, the series of elevations. What's interesting about this district, it is a district of varying heights. Buildings, you have much taller building right across the street and also adjacent to us at 126 Fifth Avenue, 120 Fifth Avenue, it's about the same height. So it's a neighborhood of varying heights, I think, that gives it its character, and that was also important to us. So maintaining that varying height by not having any visibility from Fifth Avenue was critical. On 17th Street, this is the addition, this is the parking lot. And you'll see what we're trying to do, open parts that will be visible from above the parking lot. We're blending it in with the existing brick facade on 18th Street, the same thing. It is set back and tucked in behind the adjacent building, which is taller. We did a mockup, we did a scaffolding mockup, adjusted it. That then became sort of where we set the parapets, the railings. This was about setting what's the visible part of the building, not just what the roof slab of the slab should be. And what we did then is walked around and documented everything on where the visibility is. So this is on 17th Street, there's about 50 feet of visibility of the west facade here. And the west facade is because there's a parking lot there, it's an existing brick facade, has a historical character to it, but it is visible, minimally visible. But what we wanted to do was to make sure that whatever is visible there is tied in and look like it belongs, it matches the brick, trying to stain it so that everything looks like it belongs there, using punched windows at the top of the west facade, and so it's not drawing attention to itself. On the east side of 17th Street, there's a very small portion of the bulkhead, which would be visible, it's probably about six feet or so, maybe five, six feet of the new bulkhead. This scaffolding is not part of the thing, it's actually just a different wing. But it's this piece that would be visible for about 35 feet. And it would be painted white, it wouldn't draw attention to itself, and you'd also see other bulkheads which are visible on Fifth Avenue. On 18th Street, same thing, a small portion of the bulkhead is visible, but no part of the last facade or our new building. And then again, on the west side of Fifth Avenue, a little bit more, about 130 feet of visibility, and again, trying to tie this facade in with the existing brick, using punched windows and things like that to make it look like it belongs there and not drawing attention to itself. So we developed a series of elevations and showing how everything will tie together, that the new addition doesn't detract from the historical integrity of the building that is there. And it's, although it is glass, we were very, you know, very confident in those things, like pimpy and things like that, it's vision glass, it is set back. And the south facade, which is not visible, which is over 122, is actually a brick facade, so anything that's getting direct sunlight is a brick facade, because that's actually there with the mechanical, and the elevator will be stacked aside. We, this is the west facade, so we can sort of see what the aerial is here. So the part that is visible, try and tie that in with everything else.
That part, very welcome. What's the ink panel to the right of the existing elevator?
It was actually where the dill building with shutter.
So are there shutters here now?
No, it's brick.
Okay. So it's like an infill brick right now?
It's an infill brick.
Okay, thanks.
And it's a little bit different color. We'll just do that later. We did a few sections showing how the windows would work, how we would tie them in, although in the west facade, they are a little bit wider, there's still punched windows, and we're trying to pick up the vertical lines of the mullions of the windows, the existing windows below. We are constrained by height, one because, mostly because of visibility, but also because of zoning. And so we were limited with actually low floor height, so we had 12 foot, 12 foot, 13 foot, which would give us about a nine-foot clear width with the office ceiling. And an office space, which is low, but it's kind of the threshold of what I think we're towards commercially. Series of floor plans, existing building, nothing changes except the 10th floor, which is vacant. We could, the existing structure, we can make this addition, which is good. We would expand one elevator to go to the roof and modernize everything else within the building, all the building systems and things like that. But one of the important things, as it is, a little bit more sustainable, so it's more energy efficient, so upgrading all the systems in the building is a key priority for the owner. This just shows the roof and how things set back, and where the new equipment would be, which is much smaller, lower profile, is tucked in there, and that would not be visible from the street. Everything else, all the water tanks and everything, were there, go away. And then this just shows sort of an aerial of what it would look like if you see the south facade. It would be brick, you don't see this from anywhere. But again, it says it's south facing, we're going to play off of that. And that's, there we are.
Any questions?
Yeah. How are the three-story additions in your study?
Across the street, there is one. Which is here, this is directly across the street. It's a three-story addition that's set back.
So on the diagram, on page three, that's number 11, it looks?
It's not on page three.
This is on page eight. So it's number 11, 103, I see it. And was that the provided condition, or was that just gold?
It's not that sure.
Yes, it was the provided condition in 1999.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Go to public testimony and we'll come back. Peter Stanberg?
So, good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Carolts. My name is Peter Stanberg, and I'm a longtime resident of the Ladies' Mall Historic District. I both live and work in the area. I'm a fourth-generation New Yorker. My grandmother and mother were born above my great-grandparents' notion, which is toward 51st Street and 7th Avenue, right across the street from Flinsel Road. My grandmother talked about seeing the first automobile come down the roadway. My dad is a cabinet major, who worked out of a shop on Baxter Street. I'm in college on the Upper West Side. We were a very New York fan. I've been a resident of what is now the Ladies' Mall Historic District for 44 years, since 1974. My family and I have seen the city through several boom and bust cycles. But a boom like this one hasn't happened since the days of the last rock barons. Developers are now getting away with whatever they want to. When is enough enough? 40,000 square feet isn't a little new competition, it is a whole new building. Look at the elevation, it's on page nine.
Peter Stanberg?
So good afternoon commissioners and commissioner and chair Carol. My name is Peter Stanberg and I'm a longtime resident of the Ladies Mile Historic District. I both live and work in the area. I'm a fourth-generation New Yorker. My grandmother and mother were born of my great-grandparents' notion to go to 51st Street and 7th Avenue, right across the street from Flinsel Road. My grandmother talked about seeing the first automobile come down the roadway. My dad is a cabinet maker who worked out of a shop on Baxter Street. I'm in college on the Upper West Side. We are a very New York fan. I've been a resident of what is now the Ladies Mile Historic District for 44 years, since 1974. My family and I have seen the city through several boom and bust cycles. But a boom like this one hasn't happened since the days of the last rock barons. Developers are now getting away with whatever they want to. When is enough enough? 40,000 square feet isn't a little new competition. It is a whole new building. Look at the elevation, it's on page nine of the presentation. It is huge, 40,000 square feet. The building next door, 122 Fifth Avenue, is 126 Fifth Avenue. It is a sizable building in and of itself at 90,000 square feet. This proposed construction is almost half the size of that entire very big building. Most of the precedents cited in the presentation are tiny compared to this. For example, the one across the street, the three-story one, is maybe 1,500 square feet. And even if there were precedents, which there aren't, does that make it right? Perhaps it's time to set a new precedent and say enough is enough. We're talking about the Ladies Mile Historic District, not something called the Ladies Mile Historic Avenue. Yes, this huge addition is only a tiny bit visible from Fifth Avenue, but it is very present on 17th and 18th Streets. Does that count for nothing? In their presentation to community board five, the developers claimed that they needed this rooftop addition to make the building more desirable. That is absurd. The vacancy rate for office space in this district is effectively zero. They do not need an addition like this to attract tenants. A big part of what makes this district so desirable is its historic character. Let's not kill the goose that laid the golden egg. Let's protect it. Let's protect Ladies Mile Historic District. These developers will suffer no hardship by being denied this application. They can build the square footage where it was intended and build a lovely sympathetic building in improvement to the historic district right next door. That building would replace an unsized parking lot, property that they already own. A building there would improve the character of the district, not diminish it. That is the site from which they had planned to take most of the air rights for the bulk of the square footage of this monster in the sky. I urge you to respect Ladies Mile Historic District and deny this application.
Thank you.
Also, this is an hour before it's on the schedule. There were a few people who are supposed to come to speak who aren't here yet. So just registering protest.
Thank you, thank you. We do have, and these are estimates, and we have a be here time of one. So hopefully, as we work through the comments, those people will arrive. Thank you. Okay, Paul Afferyad. Convened by Eschell Kreiter.
Good afternoon commissioners and chair Carol. My name is Paul Afferyad. I'm a longtime resident of the Ladies Historic District. I also worked in the neighborhood. The development of Ladies Mile Historic District has picked up pace over these past years. At first, it was slow, and now it seems to be happening at lightning pace. This area is hot. The big part of the reason that it's so hot is the character that has been safeguarded by the good work and hard work that Landmark Preservation Commission has accomplished. I hope that those of us here testifying today against this very large intrusion at 122 Fifth Avenue can articulate clearly, this is the intrusion that must be voted down. I'm an architect. As an architect, I appreciate the concept of air rights and the need to transfer that. As I see it, a big part of rationale for the transfer of air rights is to relieve the burden of ownership of a landmark building or a building in a landmark district. There's a lot of good that has come from these rights. But there's also times when the ability to transfer air rights has been used. Rather than relieving hardship, it has been used here to enlarge already substantial profits and to do so to the detriment of the community as a whole. We believe that this is one of those cases. The transfer of the air rights from 3 West 17th Street to 122 Fifth Avenue is a transfer sparked by greed, not by me. 3 West 17th Street is a parking lot. Even by parking lot standards, it's a pretty ugly parking lot. Rather than build a handsome as bright building in full allowable envelope, on the parking lot itself, the Romney companies would like to build in a way that will make more profitable their present building by building a 40,000-square-foot building on top of a building. This is no small rooftop addition. This is a behemoth. As we've seen in the Perkins Eastland presentation, most rooftop additions in the Ladies Historic District have been relatively modest. One- and two-story penthouses. This is not a penthouse. This is an entirely new building. If approved, this project will set a new standard for what developers can get away with in historic districts. Yes, these developers do own enough air rights to be able to build this behemoth. It is in the hands of Landmark Preservation Commission to stop this abuse of good law, to stop the very inappropriate development, an addition that is highly visible from 17th Street and 18th Street in the heart of the Ladies Historic District.
Thank you. Eschell Kreiter. Convened by Abigail Diaz.
Good afternoon, my name is Eschell Kreiter.
Kreiter, excuse me.
That's okay. This multi-story rooftop extension is 122 Fifth Avenue. As we've said already, it is a massive addition to an existing building and one that I feel is out of character with the surrounding architecture and one that is easily visible from significant stretches of West 18th Street, East 18th Street, and West 17th Street. The unique character of Ladies Mile Historic District is spittingly challenged, is beginning to feel and resemble Midtown Manhattan with nearby tall glass buildings casting shadows on the streets and parks and out-of-scale buildings on the side streets. Rents are so exorbitant that only mega-stores can afford the spaces. Where there is not another bank or drugstore moving to keep over a space, we have vacated storefronts up and down the avenues. The street traffic, both pedestrian and pedestrian, is overwhelming the neighborhood. In short, the neighborhood is losing its distinctive personality. Having lived and worked in Ladies Mile Historic District for 40 years, I've watched as this process has picked up speed and momentum. This is very disheartening. In May 1989, when Landmark designated this area as its historic district, I celebrated this designation and trusted that that would be enough to preserve the character and quality of the area. Of course, not everyone sees these changes as bad. I understand the need to keep the city vibrant and attractive. But eroding the unique character of the neighborhood does not make it more attractive. It has the opposite effect. Adding 40,000 square feet to the rooftop of 122 Fifth Avenue will only make matters worse. This huge, multi-story addition does nothing to enhance the neighborhood, but does increase many of the negatives, including adding even more bulk to the rooftop profile. As the developers have pointed out in their proposal, there are many buildings in the neighborhood that are structures built atop their century-old roofs. This is true of the Mississauga. Nearly all the rooftop additions in the neighborhood are modest one- and two-story structures with much smaller footprints, as has been mentioned by the other speakers. The one proposed for 125th Avenue is very different. These others significantly, none of them are visible from the street, and this one is. If this proposed structure is allowed to be erected, it will almost certainly be instrumental in turning the area into Ladies Mile Feet Park District, with only the lowered portions of power and buildings up and down Fifth Avenue reminding all of us of what was once an architecturally unique part of the city. This proposed addition will accelerate the loss of the neighborhood's distinctive charm. I urge this commission therefore to help us safeguard what is left by rejecting this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Abigail Diaz. I'm sorry, I can't read the handwriting. Klops, Klops, okay.
Good morning commissioners and chair Carol. My name is Abigail Diaz Klops. And I live in Ladies Mile Historic District, not to mention I was born and raised in Chelsea. I've lived in this building for 30 years. The first time a certain orange monster came onto me, onto many of our radar swings was in June of 1980. We had got control of this with lives on Teller Building on 556th Street. Well, this is a story I don't need to tell any of you. You all know it well. I'll tell it for the record. I also tell it because I have a very personal connection to it. As a young woman, I was working as a salesperson in the jewelry department at Lomwood Teller when my husband and I met. Once the premier women's specialty store in all of New York, the bottom of the building, the service department, we named that Whitney Warren Charles Fidmore. It was later renovated by Eli Jaxton. All three were greatly important architects. The orange monster planned to tear down the building. This is a lifestyle facade. Why? Because he could, because his ego needed to make it more. The building is not protected as a landmark. We quell the outrage. We quell the outrage here. We moved two exquisite bas reliefs and made them a gift to the Metropolitan Museum. But impatient to get the demolition moving, suddenly the bas reliefs were jackhammered and to cinder rings. The best time to many of us heard publicist, the first time many of us heard publicist John Barry trump masquerading as someone else was when he announced that the Trump Organization had hired an independent appraiser to declare the sculptures to be worthless. As we all know, the men have very different views of artistic American pieces and those hardworking by the Sunset Bank of Vancouver. Cut to 2014, another story that we all know too well. The 1896 bedroom door on 3rd West 29th Street. It was cited by the Pro-Development Union B as one of the best remaining examples of 19th-century New York City architecture in the neighborhood of the stock that as significantly, significantly to no less covered. After a lot of hard work to get it listed, was suddenly delisted. It came down empty, but now it was lost forever. The case of the addition of 122 Fifth Avenue in Ladies Mile Historic District is not in magnitude anywhere near from Teller or Van Nuys Building. But it is also far more minor. But it also is not. But it also is far from minor. It is also an act of vandalism. When we say no, when do we say no? Where do we draw the line? While we understand that new developments need to keep us vital, there is a time and a place for everything. 40,000 square feet is far from a minor intrusion in the Ladies Mile Historic District, an aesthetically important and fragile gentle historic district. Let's continue the fight to save it. I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Well, we do have a resolution of the community board five finding that emphasizing modern style of the addition appropriate and argument denial of the application. Would you like to respond to this?
Yes, please, thank you. First of all, directly, we just want to consider the community board process and everything. We were very open to that, but this is dependent association, which is in 126 Fifth Avenue. Just like spoke, and our office is literally across the street. We were happy to have an open dialogue with them. I know there's differences, you know, and people are always a little bit concerned when they see a development next door. But I think two things that are worth noting. We did go to community board first. They had some concerns with particularly the visibility on the west facade and materiality and, you know, the bulk and things like that. But what we did is we listened to some of their comments as well as working with Landmark staff. And that's where a lot of the answers to the west facade came from. That was a big part of it. We spent a lot of time with the community board members walking around the site. And we feel that that dialogue, while it didn't click, check all the boxes that they wanted, it actually made it a better design and it was a great process for us. And we went back to community board again. So even though it was rejected, it was a much sooner rejection the second time. Second thing is, I just want to put the scale of this in the context a little bit because although we're talking about 122 Fifth Avenue, this is really 120 and 122 Fifth Avenue, it's the same ownership. Floors are combined, particularly on the first several floors in the basement. This addition represents about a 15% increase in floor area from those two buildings. So when you combine them together and then look at how much is being proposed here, it's a 15% increase in built area between those two numbers. So while they, you know, they get 40,000 square feet, in context, it's a big building. I mean, it's more than, you know, half the block here and on this side. So we just want to keep that in context a little bit, that it is this, and then if you look at 17th Street and 18th Street also, it is a big controlled parcel. And our real primary objective was to have no use from the main thoroughfare and to understand that we're going to see this from the west facade because you, there's a three-story building which will remain there. And there's a parking lot. So you're going to see part of this, no matter what is built here. Also, just to go back, not all the air rights are being transferred for use here. Some developmental area will remain on West 17th Street. So a smaller building can be developed later. Because it's, for us, it is about, yes, it should remain as a parking lot as it is on silent. Maybe sometime in the future, I think we were actually came through landmarks about 12, 15 years ago. I did a proposal on 17th Street for a three-story building. Maybe one day, something like that, a story or two could be built, which will complete the street scape, which is important to keep the street wall. But it does transfer some of that air right up here, which we thought was very minimal and visible.
Just a question on that, on the development rights that are being transferred. How much exactly stays on 17th Street is it? Three-story building, five-story building?
Five-story, it's a three-story building, yeah, that would be built there. So about 10,000. Might I just build up as big a building as you could and not put it on the top? On 17th Street? On the parking lot, sorry. Well, you have existing tenants on the building. You have to make those floors, you have small floor places that are not as attractive for this.
Any other questions? Do you want to begin closing the hearing?
Please.
In favor. If you would like to start. This is certainly a district where there is a variety in heights. There are brownhouses to the large warehouse loft buildings and apartment-sized buildings. And that is reflected in the variation of the street walls. So the commission has approved a larger building, multiple-floor addition, where they're not visible in the vessels between the building. But I think they're already a bit kind of playing off the stories. Yes, we have approved them, they're going to be visible because again, we have such a variation of street wall heights, there has been some visibility. So the visibility here is, I guess, for about 15 feet on both 17th and 18th Street. We're going to lean up at it. Maybe we could go to the view if people think about this. Thoughts about the size and our visibility?
I was listening carefully to the testimony, trying to understand the viewpoint of why this is so destructive to the district, just the testimony. As I was, I just couldn't see that it is that, that it is a start. The visibility is minor ways, very little amount of feet of visibility, I guess, as you're walking along the hallway. And not over the principal facade's building. And it's consistent with other rooftop additions on these large buildings. I would think that if they were very visible over the primary facades, that would change the notion of the street scape in ways that I would find inappropriate. But I do not find this business to be inappropriate and I can support it as it is.
I almost agree, Fred. I think that the nature of visibility and the fact that it's not a principal facade is a factor in its favor. But I'm a little bit less persuaded by the analysis of the area. It seems to me like one addition from 20-some years ago, a little sandwiched in between two others, does not... a little sandwiched in between two others, does not, to me, seem to be a solid precedent. And when I look at the analysis they provide, I really don't see a lot of two-story additions. I see mostly one-story additions. And that jives my general knowledge such as the district. So I'm a little more concerned with the notion of our standards and our precedent. I don't want to use that word ever. But I think it's being used here and I think that this would form a data pattern for future things. It's A, visible, B, three stories. I like that. So I would prefer this were one story short. You're not harming the developer in any significant way. Scott's floor area, he's got a place to put it. I would also suggest that the visibility and the new facades are over visible side facades. And I think that the rhythm of the windows should a little more closely align with the floors below and not be wider. I think it's okay if the entire two window space is taken by window and not by window plus shutter. But I think that the rhythm of the opening is very clear, consistent, and simple and consistent from side to side should be maintained.
I agree with that completely. Again, mentioning that if somehow in the future this is going to end up as a precedent that we speak about in all the useful revisions on buildings, that becomes very precarious for us. And so I don't see one story of that. I also would like to land this for the next one.
I just want to say one more thing. I actually think this, I agree most of those should come off, but I think the second one should be set back a little bit.
So take off the first, it's three, not the third.
The top, do it at the top, and then the second one comes back just a little bit. In that regard, you are, sort of like what happened. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Yeah. Because the setback's nice. And it reduces the, I think it will reduce the visibility and all. Yeah, leave the, we approved, you know, just to, we approved three stories on twelve. It's not a whole lot. It's not all clear. So, you know, my sense is that should, you should keep it a little bit reserved.
Can we just go back to the view? I just want to add two stories. If you, seven seconds. I'm just wondering if it almost is more interesting to get a jog in it than to be standing.
Because the setback comes down. That's what I was suggesting.
Okay, does everybody agree? Okay, so, turn turn. So I think we're going to be approving it with the, recommending or approving the modifications that if one floor being eliminated and that just the setback aside, it be set back at the second floor.
I do want to say something. In a matter of dot eight twenty-two dash two oh eight one zero, this is on West 23rd Street. That's not right. Sorry. In a matter of dot eight nineteen dash two seven, that's two five twenty-two. Any awareness on the south floor? Want to be gone by Robert Green, building eight thirty-nine nineteen hundred. Under the application constructed competition, high northern border of South Scale Materials, and details are a lot of features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies' Mall Historic District. Everybody's agreeing on four and five. That the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any historic or curricular features of the building. That the presence of an addition visible on public curvairs, limited use primarily over secondary facades of this ten-story building adjacent to the side of the neighboring taller building will not change the typology of this historic store and all building or building for the major properties. That except for limited extent of use of the elevator bulkhead, the proposition will be set back. The progress of the facade may not see directly over this facade to public curvairs. But the elevator bulkhead will be similarly designed to be, in terms of plating and finish and making great color and when seen from public curvairs, will be competitively schemed with the building. That the glass curtain wall assemblies will only be minimally visible from public curvairs and will be consistent with materials, palette, and scale of modern additions found within this historic fissure. That the lot might be solved. An addition will not be visible from many advantage points on West 17th and West 18th Streets. And from those views, the red tone brick plating and the scale and pattern of punch pulpings will help the addition to harmonize with the historic secondary facade upon which they are built. And that configuration and finish are being filled with a punch, openly, will be barely susceptible from public curvairs. However, I find that the western portion of the addition will create an easy, smooth stepped profile at the western facade and an awkward transition between these facades and the primary street facade. And therefore, I contend that the western portion of the addition be reduced in height five-one-four to reduce visibility and simplify the form of these living views. That the addition be reduced in, okay, that the second floor set back on the bottom of the bad news sides. And that the window openings at the lot line facades align with the pattern of the openings below.
One floor be removed, we retire.
Yeah.
Sorry. Second.
Paul, favor. Any opposed?
Okay, moving on to item number 12, LPC 19 dash 31623. An application for certain areas in Manhattan, block 999, block 31560 Broadway. The embassy interior will have a French-inspired movie theater designed by Thomas Lamb and decorated from Rambler Studios, built in 1925. The application is to modify the interior lobbies and auditorium for incoming retail tenant. These modifications include installing a raised platform in the center of the auditorium and filling an opening at the rear wall of the auditorium by installing a partition, installing retail fixtures throughout the space and an elevated screen in front of the store's screen area. The proposal additionally includes restoring work throughout, which is being reviewed at staff level. The applicants are here to further discuss the proposal and to answer any questions.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, and I'm Mary Durex, the Preservation Consultant for the Project Chair and Commissioners. The Embassy Theater is an interior landmark, not the outside. Actually, right there, we have marquees. Very different. It was built as a theater in 1925, designed by the old architect Thomas Lamb. It stopped being a movie theater in 1997. It was the Times Square Visitor Center from 1998 to 2014, and it's been vacant since 2014. This proposal is to adaptively reuse the movie theater to repurpose it into a retail store, a Pele soccer, and to open this special interior to the public again. These are, so our idea is to bring it back to as a public space, but to respect the space, to retain and repair and restore original features such as doors, bright decorative walls, doors, ceilings, and light fixtures, and also to celebrate Pele and his role in the world in the US side. Pele was very important to New York, as you know. He started, or he helped start professional soccer in this country. And he was very much part of New York and he is very thrilled to be able to have the store on Times Square. This is what the theater looked like in the 1920s. This is what it looks like today. This is facing both directions, facing the screen and then back toward the projector booth. These are the murals by Arthur Chris, not all later. These are the two lobbies, the first lobby and then the second lobby. What we're proposing is to clean and restore the north murals, which haven't been done. There's a very damaged mural, this one over there. And we're putting a freestanding sign describing the history of the theater in front of that. That sign will look like the murals. It'll have the frame with the murals and not like the retail section. We're fixing the plaster where it's been damaged, putting back vents, putting back, relamping the lighting fixtures. We're saving all the exit signs, but we'll have to box, we're boxing all two of them because it's not an accident anymore. And we're having to add other exit signs, unfortunately, but that's how it is. We're removing odd things like this utility closet that's more or less in the middle of the floor. We're restoring the marble around avenues, around the radiators in the lobbies, restoring this floor which was originally marble and vinyl, or some sort of tile. Then we're putting back marble and tile. The other lobby has a non-historic floor covering and we're putting a rubber tile layer. Relamping all the light fixtures, fixing up the wood, which is actually in pretty good condition. My crawling from crawling architecture is going to describe what we're doing, which is basically doing some renovation and adding fixtures. Do you want to try to test quickly? Can you? What exactly ranbush did you have in when? Yeah, ranbush did the, if we could go back. Ranbush did all of the decorative, all of the decorative work, including the plaster and the lighting fixtures. Originally, yeah, originally, they were there then. And they farmed out the murals to Arthur Chris. So they were basically responsible for all of the decorative work. So, yeah, in the 20s. In the 20s. And we're also keeping a part of the, Ed Michael talked about that, the rate of the floor.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mike Paulson, as Mary said, I'm the architect on the project for the New York Theatre. This first slide, vision indication of the existing conditions on the theater and the proposed modifications. I think it's very important to point out that virtually everything that we're proposing to do here in terms of the retail store is reversible, with the exception of the inclusion of a new automatic speaker system that will be fully concealed into the existing decorative plaster ceilings with concealed heads and everything put back as much as possible to be in reasonable condition. This section, I'm not quite sure how to use the laser part of this flat actually. This portion here is the primary part of our retail area where the floor is leveled out. But that is akin to a pure raised floor system, so easily reversible. We're not affecting a permanent change to the rate of the floor. In fact, you can see that on the north and the south sides of the floor, we're maintaining the slope of the rate to approximately five feet away from the columns and from the murals, so that visitors to the store still have the opportunity to see those original murals of the space. In addition, we have restorative work that is happening at the outer as well as the inner lobby. Again, everything has been done so that as much as possible, there is no impact to the existing structure. These overall cross-sections just give you an idea of the existing conditions across the theater from the outer lobby, inner lobby, then the theater itself, to what is proposed. And I can give this last in more detail in subsequent slides. This is the indication of the plan as well as the existing, and on the bottom, proposed, outer and inner lobby. The intention is to keep all of that, the existing design, the same. The addition of some freestanding truss-like features that would stand in front and frame out the existing display windows, similar in concept to this, but not cross over that area. So not obstructing the ceiling, the chandeliers. Everything that is there today would remain and be visible as it is today. Similar on the other side, it's just the opposite direction from the existing detrains that we have that are being maintained, simply relit, and the doorways to active facilities on the south side. The view, the left image is what exists today. The decorative light, the floor, from what we can, sorry. The floor patterns here, it's difficult to see, but that will be restored to the black and white color that you're seeing in this location. And you can see the light, space frame type trusses that form displays in front of the existing architecture. But the ceiling elements and the chandeliers all are made of this. Overall, as a nice metric, the outer and the inner lobby, the theater, the rate of the theater, and the back screen elevation to what we propose today, really no change in the overall layout. And in fact, overall, the store is situated in such a way that as one walks in, they come into the retailer or they go down to the side and people on curves to come down to this area as another scouting area where there's actually seating so that there is visibility to the projection screen as it would be replaced with a freestanding LED screen publicly in front of that existing location. Down at that area, the screen again, where in this area I'm seeing here are the murals that Mary was mentioning earlier. These are the two murals that will be restored. This is an image of the badly damaged existing mural. Our proposal does not contemplate wanting to replicate or restore that mural. It's beyond being able to be saved. But we would simply take a freestanding sign and place that in front of that mural so that people will be able to see that there still is something behind it. The materials of that frame that would tell a little bit of the history of the theater would be the same materials or complementary to the frames of the murals, which would also be restored as part after storage process. So all in all, a homogenous addition to the murals. At the front area, the murals in previous definitions were already missing. We're simply saying to respect the archway of those elevations and to come in front of it by several feet with just display that begins to mimic that same arch. Again, does not try to advocate it. Similarly, the opposite view, these are the murals that were restored previously. The front elevation at the projection screen itself. This is the wall of the screen here. We have blocks out at the upper corner, which you see here, which is including some plumbing. And we've come off of that wall a couple of feet with our LED display, virtually the same size as the original screen of the theater. The only connection that we're making to the These are the murals that were restored previously. The front elevation at the projection screen itself. This is the wall of the screen here. We have blocks out at the upper corner, which you see here, which is including some plumbing. And we've come off of that wall a couple of feet with our LED display, virtually the same size as the original screen here. The only connection that we're making to the existing architecture is where we need to provide some stabilization for the wall and such as that. The back elevation or the projection booth area, all of the openings of that remain. So this is our, this is the existing elevation at the top, at the bottom. You can see that we're keeping all the projection, everything below there really does not have any significant. This area here is an existing opening that the landlord of the building is in the process of closing anyway. So that is going to be something that would be better off if it was concealed. But again, we're not putting anything directly on top of it. We're simply putting it in front of it with fixturing displays that akin to the whole concept of soccer sting is very somewhat transparent in and of itself. Screening type material you can see here. The proposed screening material, we can actually see through for the most part. And then as we look at the, looking north and south in the theater area itself, we're indicating that the display fixturing is again this transparency of netting and trenchment type materials that allows us to merchandise the space while at the same time, from the center of the floor, allows people to look through the overall space. We are including some additional lighting for retail experience, but none of that lighting is connected to the existing ceiling. In fact, we're restoring or reactivating all of the existing light, the domes, the main dome in the middle as well as the circular light fixtures on the perimeter. And then all of our new lighting comes from the floor and stops well short of the city's hospitality to the people. So on the left here is the existing theater space. On the right would be the experience that one would see if one went into the theater. Looking alongside at a, one of the elevations on the north side, we have again the existing conditions on the left. And on the right, the ability to not only merchandise the space, but also to see beyond that there is this theater unlocked that we respectfully sit in within. This is on the left, along the rake of the theater, looking down with the murals on the right. That same view where people are able to walk down to their between the display floor and base floor portion along the existing rake of the theater and be able to see the murals.
I have a little question. When were the seats removed? Before, do you know?
I believe that they were removed when the commission approved a proposal in 1998 for the Times Square visitors. So I believe that's about the time of the seats were removed.
I guess a question for Elizabeth. What extent do we, as a commission, weigh in on the fixturing of the space? Fix their furniture maybe, or maybe they're attached to the ground, but probably in a very lightweight. What are we looking at here and what are we being asked to apply?
So anything that is on wheels and is movingable is not part of the application for you. But anything that is physically attached to the floor or the walls?
So in this case, the trusses that are surrounding, that are creating, like armatures for lighting. Basically, everything we're seeing in here, with the exception of the carts, the centers, like this wall that's sitting on the edge, that's all part of what's being asked, being deemed appropriate, right? Got it. Thank you.
You say not, not the rolling carts? Not the trusses and the framed walls that are closing from, that are attached to the floor? So it's all permanently attached?
The floor here, excuse me. This detail up here shows the pedestal system for the floor. So it is in fact, this is the rake of the existing theater floor. And these are adjustable pedestals, much like you would see either in the computer room or roof deck or that type of application where the pedestals themselves are adhered to the floor, but they're not over through the floor. They're not kind of fastened at that point.
But this to be clear, if it's something that is not picked up and moved, then it's under our purview. So raised floor and those racks, the wall racks and trusses are all under our purview. And so we would look at one, how is it attached? Reversible or reversible language? Two, what is its usual effect on this space?
So the way in which the raised floor is attached to the actual floor matters to us. The way those racks are attached to the raised floor is irrelevant to us, but it's not our fault.
Except that what is relevant is how they affect your sense of the space.
Okay, got it.
The only thing we're not looking at are the rolling fixtures that are on the floor that can be pushed around on a regular basis.
What is the floor in the theater space?
The green.
It's covered with some sort of tile on various levels. And we have not been able to figure out just what it is. I know it originally would have been carpeted. But what's underneath, we don't know.
This is strange, but I don't feel we've ever, or I've never seen the case where there have been, it seems so many commission-approved modifications that we have been degraded on some level with the quality of the landmark. It's confusing to me. How to deal with that?
I know. I think interiors are interesting because it's a space that are defined by a volume and finishes and fixtures. And particularly in adaptive reuses of the reuses of those spaces, there can be new installations. And so what is, you know, one that comes to mind is a main building on 14th Street, which was for a short period a food store and then a CVS. And we approved shelving and all sorts of trusses for life.
But I'm pointed to the fact that in, I guess, 1998, the rakes changed, I mean, besides the seating coming out, the slope of that, you know, the theater experience was moved. So it's, so the fact that it's been so modified even before throwing it to the movable, non-movable?
Well, I think that we have modified rakes before because, you know, they're adaptive reuses. And so that's.
But not interior landmark, not in the last.
You just asked a huge question. Frank had set up for merchandising. But it seems like, just curious, and it will sort of carry me back on how I think about the space a little bit. You know, what are the various uses that the space is going to have?
Well, in addition to it being a retail environment, the intention is that space doesn't invite the public into special events. It encourages people quite purposely to come down to this area and be able to experience the screen as it once was, albeit not in the regular overall view, more in a feature setting. But one of the things that was attractive about the space to the owners was this experience of entering the theater that's similar to going into a stadium. This theater, you come in, you come under a marquee, you're on the outer lobby, you're in the lobby, then you're in this experience, very similar to the way that you would enter any kind of sports stadium. You tend to come from the outside, from large experiences, funnel down, then you celebrate that experience when you enter the stadium, in this case, the theater.
So you could, because there's such a large screen, you could set up chairs and there could be like screenings of the World Cup or something.
Exactly.
Or depending upon what the surface is. How high are the ceilings?
The ceilings range in height from, at the beginning, close to 14 feet, to here being 16 feet.
So there could be other kinds of things, like someone might demonstrate, you know, soccer techniques or something.
Absolutely. Very much part of this experience and its location in Times Square is to bring the public in.
Make it experience. I just wanted to really hear a little more about what this feels. I think it impacts in a way how we look at this space. To get a better sense of how it will hopefully be utilized.
Should I talk about that?
Sure. We have, yeah, sorry.
Gary Davis. Gary Davis, owner. Yeah, just took a quick conversation on the other side of soccer. So this is very much not just a retail experience, this is a soccer experience as well. So whether it's matches, events, we invite local soccer teams in with their coaches to have sessions on, in the meantime. We also have historic, in fact, like Pele, for instance, will come along and speak to the public throughout. So he's very much not just selling, but he's also part of people coming there to experience soccer experience. The whole thing is a great expectation for the world. And as you probably know, World Cups are going to be taking place in 2026. So Pele is the only person who has won World Cup three times. And it's a very historic thing that the world of soccer wants to have a World Cup.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a question. Any other questions? Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, the SORC Sister Council. HTC supports this clever adaptive reuse of this long vacant movie house. And we appreciate how the applicant has embraced the interior landmark condition. Instead of relegating the protected interior features to serve their new model, the applicants have elevated the space by proposing to restore store features and integrate them into their scheme. Employing smart technology measures like a pedestal system to harmonize and change of interior grade is an open-minded approach to make a non-immential space have a second life, and this is quite viable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rebecca from Times Square Alliance. I'm sorry, I just can't remember last name.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Lee Berman from the Times Square Alliance. And I'm here representing Tim Tompkins, our president. As you may already know, the Times Square Alliance has long occupied this space and lovingly renovated on two different occasions. In both of these instances, we were acutely aware of the elements of the embassy, which were essential and needed to be preserved, such as the narrow entryway oriented ceiling, ragged on the floor, and historic murals, five of six of which were restored by the Alliance, just to say to being so damaged that the restorations were not feasible. We were also aware that any fixtures or improvements needs to all be to be reversible to allow for the ultimate potential reversion to theater use. We have seen the rendering from the edges of the proposed installations, and it seems that all of these elements are respectfully dealt with. Compared with some previous problematic proposals from 40 years ago, which involved installing an escalator in the entrance hallway, these proposals are far less intrusive. Additionally, there is also extensive damage in the ceiling caused by severe leaks by the adjacent McDonald's, which Pele Soccer intends to repair and restore. For the Alliance, one of the many benefits of having an active tenant is that the space, especially the ceiling, will be restored to pristine condition. Another benefit is that this space, which has been closed for years because it is very challenging to market, will finally be open to the public on a daily basis to be seen and enjoyed. Finally, while not specifically relevant to the landmark issue, the Alliance views Pele Soccer as a positive initiative to the Times Square neighborhood, as it celebrates soccer and our collection of brands that appeals to our many international visitors. It is for Times Square a relatively distinctive tenant for a truly distinctive space. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? We have a resolution from Community Board 5 recommending approval of the application. Any last questions before we close the hearing? You motion to close the hearing?
I just want to quickly go on record, very fond of this. I know exactly why this came along and that all thinking exactly for the very large gates of toll booth downtown Brooklyn. And Barry had a restaurant, an occupied historic restaurant, and chose illegally to ignore everything about the interior of that historic area space because it didn't conform to the test. And they boarded it all up and protected, completely protected, all the historic elements and the floor with this. I'm not sure they did so well there. This is also, I would say, I don't really know, that you could have existed in any number of light box kind of spaces. But you've chosen a very historic and important interior of Thomas Land, and I think very creatively, adaptively reused the space. While, and all the while, improving measurably through all sorts of elevation techniques and aspects that don't relate to Pele or soccer necessarily at all, but enrich the environment of this space. And I think everything you're doing there is really admirable and is a perfectly appropriate way of adaptively using short soccer shirts and paraphernalia of nothing to do with that historic theater or its experiences. That's kind of also the excitement of adaptive use. That is a really great thing. Just to follow up on that.
I certainly, I second, you know, Chris' comments. And one of the exciting things about interior landmarks is the ability to really engage the public and bring it back in, which often we have serious problems with either because of new use or just that there is no use. There's no, you know, use. I personally, based on where I live, think this is going to be a very lucrative enterprise and a magnet. And I think it also pin up some great educational value. I like the fact that they're using mesh and green and even the lighting to try to evoke a soccer stadium, which I think is good. One of the things I would suggest is that the applicant consider using other languages as part of the interpretive template, particularly Spanish and Brazilian, I mean Portuguese, excuse me. Because I know that it's anticipated being frequented by a lot of people from this community and also from abroad who benefit from learning about the historic aspects and other languages.
Just to follow up, I think one of the benefits of, this is not an easy space. You have a complex space outside with a lot of people. And prior terms of having, you know, the infrastructure in gear, the ceiling being not very adapted in gear, I think this is a good effort to at least for people to at least to appreciate what Thomas Land has done to the interior. And I hope that the, having gone to school with this field and the public fan and I know what soccer is, of course. That this is a combination because it's not easy. This space is deep. The ceiling is big, not very tall, very high. And so it's not a lot of space to work with. So just to go there.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the methods. And first, I think all of the work is reversible. So the elements are attached and reversible. And there's a lot of restoration work that is going on in this proposal, but I think there's also real benefit in the interior designation. And finally, I think this proposal really, as you said, embraces the interior designation. And I like that it encourages people to come in and walk around and have a better experience of the space. So I wish you all the best and hopefully that's.
In the matter of document number 19-316231560 Broadway, the Embassy Theater and Interior Landmark, the application is to modify the interior lobbies and theater space. I recommend approval, noting that the work will support the adaptive reuse of the interior landmark, that the work will not eliminate or damage any significant historic features, that the truss displays in the outer lobby space will not be installed into the historic marble flooring and will only be attached to the wall in areas of plaster. That the proposed rubber flooring can be installed at the inner lobby and or to. That the proposed rubber flooring can be installed in the inner lobby and auditorium will be reversible and will not damage historic flooring, that the support structure for the raised platform within the auditorium will be reversible, will preserve the historic break of the floor, will not cause damage to significant features of the interior, that limiting the platform and displays to the center of the auditorium will retain circulation throughout the space similar to the historic circulation, using aisles around original seating and will allow access to the historic murals, that the proposed tiered seating at the east end of the raised platform will recall theater seating, that the proposed restorative work including the cleaning and restoration of the two murals at the north wall will help preserve this designated interior space and return the theater closer to its historic appearance, that although the damaged mural of the north wall is in an advanced stage of deterioration which precludes full restoration, it will be retained and stabilized, that the promoted LED display will be installed in front of the historic picture screen area, and that the reintroduction of a screen in this location will recall the original use of the auditorium space as a movie theater, that the infilling of the large opening at the rear wall of the auditorium is needed for the adaptive reuse of the interior, and that marble surround will be retained thereby maintaining this historic fabric and the presence of the opening and recognizing the historic volumes of the two spaces. The majority of the decorative historic exit signs will be used thus preserving these original features, that only the two historic exit signs above the enclosed opening at the rear wall will be covered to comply with code, that the projector holes will be maintained preserving a sense of the original use of the auditorium space as a movie theater, that the proposed retail shelving checkout counter and other features, fixtures, will be freestanding and will not damage or obscure any significant historic fabric, and that the work will maintain the special architectural and historic character of this interior landmark.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And true, thank you.
Next up is item number thirteen, LTC one nine dash two zero eight three nine, an application for a certificate of approval in this number of Manhattan, block twelve thirty four, lot seventy five three, two twenty five West eighty sixth Street, the Bellmore for the Digital Landmark, Italian Renaissance style apartment building designed by Kiss and Weeks and built in nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety nine. The application is to install a barrier free access ramp.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Mr. Leam, this is the Division's staff. Twenty five West eighty sixth Street, also known as the Bellmore, is an individual landmark located on an high block bordered by Broadway, Amsterdam Avenue, West eighty sixth Street and West eighty seventh Street. The proposal is located within one of the two colored passageways that lead from West eighty sixth Street to the central courtyard. And the purpose to remove historic bluestone steps at the westernmost entrance, uh, shown here on the plan, is the existing plan of the ground floor, proposed plan of the ground floor being closed or insulated here, eighty sixth Street and this is the passageway to the second courtyard space. Uh, so the proposal is to remove historic bluestone steps at the westernmost entrance and install a barrier free access ramp, landing and steps, featuring concrete paving, bluestone patio at the side, and dark runs, and it's no railings. And existing close-up plan here, this is the location of the section, the steps will be moved, this is a proposed ramp. Installation of a ramp will be made in conjunction with the widening of the passageway paving, which was previously approved by the Commission in February twenty seventeen, and will be seen through public corridors through this fence, uh, at the West eighty sixth Street side, which leads to the elevation sequence. So, existing furniture images looking towards the central corridor way towards the West eighty sixth Street, uh, close up photos of the existing historic steps. And we're meeting on this side? You have minutes here to answer any questions?
If you've got a handout, you can maybe at least walk through the pictures.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, not.
Not, so, are any questions for the answer? Is there anyone who's here to speak at this application? Okay, we do have a letter from Landmarks West recommending approval of the application, and a resolution from Community Board Seven also approving the application. Any questions? Motion to close the hearing? All in favor? Aye. Expose.
Very modest.
Very modest, and our materials, the natural materials.
Uh, then we do make a question, please. In the letter, LTC one nine three zero eight three nine, two twenty five West eighty sixth Street, Bellmore, individual landmark, Italian Renaissance style apartment building designed by Kiss and Weeks, and built in nineteen oh eight to nineteen oh nine, the application is to install a barrier free access ramp, which is, I recommend approval finding those ramps provide barrier free access without eliminating or to curate any inherent opening to the center courtyard. The ramp stairs will be sixty nine, most of the floor will be, had a little type of cascade rate case with very few. Since materials provisioned, this will provide a comfy, unique ramp, steps, and dark lights handrail for a comfortable installation of windows, materials and finished pallets of each estimated building, and the ramp will only partially visible under thorough mirrors and windows through a fence and will not detract from the sprinkler and ancient features of the building for the last year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Misses, we're, uh, going to switch the last two hearing items, uh, so we'll do like the fifteen first, this is LTC one nine dash two seventy six seven, an application for a certificate of approval in this number of Manhattan, block fifteen oh six, lot sixty one, twenty eighth ninety fifth Street, and climbing the old historic building. The Renaissance Revival South Row Houses, I'm back Henry Anderson, and the application is to alter window openings.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Carolyn, passion, Division's staff. The subject property is located on the south side of the street, eighty fifth and Madison Avenues, um, and is also the eastern block end of a one of the in a row of six. The applicant is proposing to remove the top floor windows and openings, create three blue openings at this top floor, and then stores ranked by casement windows or the middle openings. So here are photos showing the existing conditions at the top floor, and this is their rental proposal. Now, the following slides show the existing conditions of the rear facades within the donut. So these rear facades are from the row houses facing East ninety fourth Street. And these photos show the rear facades of the other five houses within the row, as well as the adjacent road to the east of the subject property. So again, they're proposing to remove these two windows and create three blue window openings, um, to install French doors and casement windows in architect and builder who are more clear to answer your questions.
Is there anything you'd like to add? Could you come up and state your name?
Sure. I'm Lee Stallone, Joe Humphries is the architect, I'm still the potential owners of the house's works with me. Essentially, Carolyn's right, we're here to talk about one window at the back of this house, um, that, um, cannot be seen from a public, any public view. Uh, in front of this house, nothing is changing to the front street view. We took this to the community board, and after taking their thoughts, uh, we presented to them, and forty people, thirty nine people, uh, voted in favor, and let us down our conditional opening. It is, hopefully, the more straightforward presentation you're getting today, because it is just about one window.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Sarah Kamalatos.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Sarah Kamalatos, Friends, we have our inside historic districts. Friends Preservation Committee feels that the currently approved configuration of the door and window on the fifth floor, as seen on page one of the application, is an appropriate treatment for the rear of this townhouse. While the new door and new windows are not categorically inappropriate on a non-vital rear facade, it's important to note that this house is on the end of a continuous row of six houses built by Henry Anderson in eighteen ninety nine. The two staff approved openings express a continuity with the lower floors and maintains the restoration pattern seen on the intact mirrors of this nineteenth century row. Friends Preservation Committee remains troubled by applications that don't accurately represent the cumulative impact of permits issued to applications spread across the staffing commission level review. Friends asks permission to follow up the recommendation of the staff to improve the two openings on the fifth floor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak? And we do have, uh, a letter from Carnegie Health Neighbors, uh, proposed to the application to alter the fifth floor, and propose, uh, maintaining two window openings and replacing the roof with a cover railing, and, uh, and then there are some comments on the rear extension, which is not part of this application. And we have a letter from Community Board Eight recommending approval. Would you like to respond to some of the comments, particularly the, um, relationship with the rest of the buildings in the row?
Thank you very much, federal, I'm, I'm, you know, the owner, my wife and daughter Anna in the back, and what I wanted to say is we've been participating in all of the community board meetings, and it's been, I'm interested, here, we're, we're able to share our thoughts and our dreams with everybody, and when we bought this house, we were really open-minded, so we've been very careful working with the staff closely to make sure that we're doing the right thing, because we're not doing this, so we want to be the one. And so, that window in the video actually goes to my bathroom and my room, and that's why we don't, I went to roll. Now, um, our thought about this is, as, what is your restrictions, we have to take most of it, so we went to our neighbors and asked, do you mind, can I call a window, can I do this, and everybody has supported, and, because as you start to look around, you see all sorts of different, uh, architectures, as if everything was consistent. If everything was consistent, then we would ourselves enjoy the view of having consistency around us, right, and we'd want to, but here, sadly, that, that has gone. We think that the addition of this third window will not take away from anybody, right, but having it would greatly enhance, uh, really to enjoy the apartment. Thank you.
Any questions? Motion to close the hearing? Favor? Aye. Carolyn, this, uh, this photo shows, so here is the subject property twenty, East ninety fifth Street, to the left of these are the other five houses within this row, and then to the right of twenty, the subject property is a separate, is a different row. So it happens to sort of fall at the end of this row, adjacent to a row of three, a pattern of three openings. It does look like even within its current row, there have been some alterations of the, if they may take the two pattern, two A pattern, um, and this is not visible to many people in the row there, so, we can go over it, yeah. Considerably, it's been, uh, yes.
In the matter of LTC nineteen dash two seventy eight six seven, twenty eighth ninety fifth Street, Carnegie Hall Historic District, the application is to alter the window on the, I note, uh, I note this is a very scale, sorry, scale, interiors, and details are a matter of interest that contributes to the other potential heroes, store factor, of eternity for this historic district. I recommend approval, finding that the work will not be displayed in any public space, but the other half of the row have been modified to talk to, and the work will likely initiate a relationship with two new basic houses. And that the new basic elevators will incorporate a sentimental arch, solar crossing, and request, which is, which is an original feature evident in this house.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Please, one.
Any sort of, things they've all known there.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and read in the last item of the day. As noted, uh, going back to item fourteen, this is LTC one nine dash two sixty eight seven, an application for a certificate of approval in this number of Manhattan, block eleven twenty nine, lot sixty four, sixty six West seventy seventh Street, in K, in the, in the, on the south side of the, the Upper West Side, Central Park, Washington Historic District, Renaissance Revival, uh, class building designed by Tom Wilson and built in nineteen forty five. The application is to construct a barrier free access ramp and historic runways.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Michelle Perry, Preservation Staff, this application is for work at sixty six West seventy seventh Street, which is a Renaissance Revival style building located at the southeast corner of Columbus Avenue and West seventy seventh Street, the Upper West Side, Central Park, Washington Historic District. The proposal before you today is to construct a barrier free access ramp and, um, alter storefront and door. The proposed ramp will be constructed of black finish metal, and the storefront in front will match the existing modern metal, metal and go, um, the door shifted further to the north to a off door, a shorter platform length, existing storefront can be seen here. Uh, these slides show some additional views of the building as well as details of the storefront system. These slides show additional contacts. Yeah, apologize, this is the, uh, the previous version of the presentation. All right, very well, uh, with the storefront details, um, and then the following slides show existing contacts within the historic district, this is the main, uh, next door, um, and then additional ramps that have previously been approved within the, um, historic district. So the applicant and the order are here to discuss the proposal in more detail.
So mine is Walter, I can't guarantee the record, now it's been sixty six West seventy seventh Street. So I'll quickly go through. So, I'll quickly go through this. We also have the owner of the building, Michael Bruber, is here to ask some questions as well. So, we have two existing retail spaces here on the, at sixty-six West Seventy-seventh Street, on the seven, uh, entrance right here. The, this was a restaurant for a long time, the restaurant just closed. A new restaurant is now in here doing renovations, it will be open soon. This now is vacant, but there was a tenant in here for a long time as well. The original entrance to this restaurant was over here, the new restaurant tenant wants to locate their entrance over here. So, they also, the previous owner, had a federal ADA lawsuit against them, because they did not have handicap access. But they left. And so, we saw the opportunity to be able to put in a handicap ramp here that would allow access to both spaces with one ramp. And our intention is to try to get this up and running again, before this new restaurant is open to possible future renovation, which is happening now all over the city. So, this ramp comes up, an eight-foot slope, to get us up eight inches. You then have a platform that allows entrance into the right-hand space and the left-hand restaurant, and it steps down on the side. We're trying to make this as, you know, the smallest possible intrusion into the sidewalk as possible, again, it's one or two spaces.
Can I ask a question on the rail? For good by ignorance. Is that second, second and third rail below the top rail required by?
Yes, this is to keep the feet of the wheelchair from going off and, you know, the wheel, the wheels of the wheelchair fall off the side. Middle one is required to, and this is the minimum required by federal ADA. The owners have their own ADA, we have to meet federal ADA now, because that's what all these lawsuits are about. Again, the extensions, everything about this is the minimum that's required to meet code. We don't want any more, just what we need. We're proposing this to be made in black. We are proposing this to be made out of metal. And the reason, Michael Bruber will speak a little bit too more to this, but we're trying to get this erected as quickly as possible, and we're trying to get this in a situation where the new tenant moves in, we can adapt this to what they may want to do. We just lost a tenant on the left-hand side, it's an all-new restaurant, they moved their entrance, so we don't know what's going to happen, this tenant comes in, or that tenant, restaurant fails, and we change it. Again, we try to keep everything towards this side, this of course is at some point this, this, the original arcade here was taken away, this was one we're trying to infill. We're trying to keep most of it on that, so it doesn't interfere so much with the very beautiful part of the building there. Also, we took a look at possibly putting ramps inside, we would need two ramps if we did them inside. Our issue is that our existing foundation wall and top of concrete slab are eight inches above the sidewalk level. So, in order to bring the ramps at sidewalk level into our building, we would have to do major structural work at the top of that foundation and, uh, concrete slabs, the roof supports, which became very expensive. And so, we looked at putting it outside in one ramp, instead of two, inside one ramp to take care of building analysis. Uh, this is our neighbor on Seventy-seventh Street, that is a black metal stair that's going up, so we're looking if this allows us to be in context with things that are right next to us. And of course, exterior concrete ramps, there you go, you can take a look at the railings there. This does not have a guard at the bottom, and it's actually not federal ADA compliant, nor is this one. Well, this one has, has run at the lower. Yeah, that, this one has that lower. Uh, and this, of course, one of the largest concrete ramps you'll ever see here. Central Park West might kind of fall for us. And I'd like to introduce Michael Bruber, who's the owner of the building, and he can answer any questions about why we have to make some of these decisions that we made trying to get this.
I'm sorry, I'm not used to a project. My name is Michael Bruber, and, uh, let me just read you what I wrote this morning. In anticipation of this interruption, I apologize if I'm too early for it. My family's own property, three fifty-three, three fifty-nine Columbus Avenue, also known as sixty-six West Seventy-seventh Street, which comprises two ground floors, retail spaces, and a residential building above for over half a century. I personally had continuous residence in the building since nineteen seventy-nine, probably over than some of you here. To the present, as do other members of my family, presently reside in the building, including my brothers and kids as well. We have no partners, we're not a breed, we're not some large conglomerate. This is the only residential building in the Yon, and I can represent that we are good citizen partners for our community here in New York City and wherever we come from. I was raised in New York City, and I graduated from college within to apartment in this building. I opened and ran a successful antique store, cafe, and ice cream shop on Amsterdam Avenue when I was a kid, and eventually formed the first Amsterdam Avenue Emergence Association. In the early eighties, concurrently, I was appointed to Community Board Nine by Mayor Dickens, which I know is the building's name now. Today, I come to you to discuss our concerns for permanent ADA compliant concrete ramp. As you may know, our previous tenant of over three decades developed, had a portable ramp on the other side of the space on the Seventy-seventh Street side. It was compliant at some point, or so they thought, but it was deemed uncompliant later on. Our ramp proposed today is through two spaces, in an attempt to limit the proliferation of these unsightly but necessary entrances. Even the location of the ramp is presently a litigious area of the ADA. The fact that I, that before I had my thirty-plus-year-old tenant, I had a parade of failed tenants, each wanting different setups and different locations of their entrances and fixtures. This ramp could go on the side of Seventy-seventh Street, and then we might have two of these eyesores on our building. It all depends on the tenant and the depth of their pockets. Unfortunately, the litigious nature of these ADA cases made us decide that we should build this, as opposed to a tenant, and accommodate both our spaces, although we love our new tenant and hopefully, feeling mutual today. Should they fail, we may have a request to change by the market for something different elsewhere. All that I am suggesting is that we make these ramps slightly less permanent than concrete. Steel, painted anyway, the LPC prefers is movable, reusable, recyclable, and ecologically friendly, and should be, and, and, and should need to be dismantled, far less noisy to do so for the immediate jack hammers. We hear enough of that every day. Why do we need to have that? Please let us build this to look permanent in the partnership grade if you'd like, but let us weld it and reuse it in the future, should be repurposed. That's all for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello, Carol, Historic District Council? We don't have any issues with the ramp. Oh, we just, our only comment was, "We are unable to determine the inspiration or design genesis for the proposed storefront." With New York's nineteen forties tax photographs now digitized online, determining and consulting a historic condition is immediately accessible and should always be stepped on. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? We do have a letter from Landmark West recommending approval of the application. And ask the commission to consider painting here to match the rest of the street level base, so there's like. Meaning that break here to match the rest of the base, so that something outside of the application. Community Board Seven also recommends approval. Any further questions for the application? Yes, Kim?
Did you need to follow the DOT?
Speaking of this side, it doesn't need DOT approval, it always has to be followed with DOT, because you're not projecting past three or four inches from the base of your building. They don't have to approve it, they don't have to review passenger project. You need DOT approval first.
You have a question? A motion to close the hearing? All in favor? Any close? Any thoughts? Vincent?
I, I feel it's often when these, and they will more, come to our attention, I've been really uncomfortable with the proliferation of this concrete lamps before there's some more type of system-wide, city-wide considerations, or consideration of the design of these things. So, I'm really actually the applicant, in, um, in making these things, at this point, you know, disassemblable and, and more like furniture pieces that are in every way solid enough for them to function, but not, not permanent in the way that concrete is.
Yes.
I agree with that, but I also, just to remind us, as Ted Martin suggested, that whenever we can push them inside, we do, and we, we're doing that, and in this case, I think it would be a starting, a good, that's why.
At least, I think that the one ramp will serve both tenants.
Yes.
Consolidates.
I agree with what you said, and I want to thank you for the very thoughtful approach.
A motion to close the hearing. Diane.
In the matter of this district, in Manhattan, all fifteen nineteen, two six eight and seven, sixty-six West Seventy-seventh Street, AKA three fifty-one, three fifty-seven, seven, the upper side, central park west Historic District, a Renaissance Survival style flats building designed by Tom Wilson and built in eighteen ninety-four, and applied. Application is to construct a barrier free access ramp and replace storefront infill. I note that the building's style's scary, mysterious, and the details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the upper west side, central park west Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the work will not eliminate or obscure any significant architectural features in the building or sidewalk. The proposed proposed ramp will provide barrier free access for commercial spaces, therefore eliminated for additional ramps at this facade. The modest scale of the ramp will not overwhelm the facade of the building, the simple design of the railings, and that a ramp will be in keeping with other ramps on the buildings of this style, type, and age within the historic district, with the replacement of metal storefront elements and relocation of a storefront door closer to the adjacent commercial space will facilitate installation of shorter ramp, and that the replacement of a portion of modern storefront infill will help support the unity of the existing storefront designs.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? And approve, thank you. Thank you. So, that is the end of our debate.